All right, I would not like to bring to order the town of Cordera regular town council meeting for Tuesday, December 5th, 2023, starting at 6:30 PM. Can I get a rule call?
Councilmember Casissa. Councilmember Avasio.
Here.
Councilmember Thomas.
Here.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Here.
Mayor Lee.
Here. Can we get a salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we'll do open time for public comment. A few of us have shared some of your thoughts about why you're here tonight. And so if anyone's here for TJ's or any consideration related to gyms, that is separate from what we'll be talking about with the parklet. So if you'd like to give comment, please do that now. So now I'm going to read, "Any member of the public may address the town council concerning an item not on the council agenda." Speakers will be limited three minutes unless otherwise specified by the mayor. The public will be given an opportunity to speak on each agenda item at the time it's called. Once the public comment portion of any item on this agenda has been closed by the council, no further comment from the public will be permitted. So now's the time. Is there anyone that has public comment? Okay, if you could stand up to the podium, and if there's multiple people, you could also queue if you'd like. Turn on the mic, make sure it's on there. When you're ready, you know, we have a three-minute timer. We'll start for you. You ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, my name is Beth Cook. I've lived on Manzanita Avenue for over forty years, and I've seen a lot of changes. In October, we had two wonderful events on our street, where we closed our street, and one was for a block party, where there were twenty-three out of twenty-six houses showed up. We closed off the street. We had a, I have to put my glasses on, sorry. We met for food, drinks, conversation, and enjoyment of watching our kids play on the streets with no cars. The second was a Halloween event where we closed off the street, and we had more than, or almost, two hundred trick-or-treaters with no cars driving down the streets. Parents and kids were walking down, and it was just wonderful to see. The cost paid for these two events was a total of $270. It seems to me that the town stands to gain a whole lot more by encouraging block parties than collecting fees. It is not the amount, it's the principle. We should be encouraging community-building activities, not profiting from them. Today, I am here to ask that the council please consider the permits and the insurance fees for closing neighborhood streets for block parties. Thank you.
Okay. Next.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here. Thank you very much. And thank you all for what you do for the town of Cordera. I work out at TJ's Gym. I'm a member of the Legends class, which is the senior class. And we work out outside. Those of you who drive by probably see us work outside. And it's good for us because some of us are immunocompromised, and working out in the sunshine is a good thing. My reason to be here today is to ask you to consider to let us continue to work out outside in the breezeway or parkway in front of TJ's. Thank you.
Hi, I'm TJ. First of all, I'd like to thank Martha and Adam for all the work they've done with us over the last few years, as well as the council, to extend the lifeline that we needed to stay afloat through the last three, three and a half years. I'd also specifically like to thank Martha for alerting us as to what was happening in some of these changing tides that are going on, as well as her impromptu civic lessons and teaching us how these things work. And so, as was mentioned, our group, we're not the youngest county, okay? And in around, and the folks that come to the gym, our average age is around fifty. And we have an incredible wide array of people who are much more comfortable in the situation of being outside. I realize this isn't on the agenda. I think we have, Martha alerted to us that things might be changing December 31st, and are changing. And we, as you guys may know, you've received some emails from our members. We can continue that weekly or daily, however often we need, to hopefully get it to the point that we're looking to extend what has already been offered to us to find some sort of permanent possibility for this to happen. So our folks can continue to enjoy the workouts that they're doing, you know, health, fitness, and wellness. It's what we've been doing here for twenty-two years in the county, and we hope that continues, and we don't feel that we are burdening anyone with what we're doing. And obviously, you know, we'd be happy to discuss anything that the council would want to bring up in future for questions or anything else. So that is the hope, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I attended all the planning commission hearings on parklets. And one of the questions that I raised was whether or not the new parklet ordinance would apply to uses like TJ's. And the response was no. That's a private parking lot. And there was kind of a collective shrug, like gave us the impression that everything was going to be okay for their continued use. So now that I've taken a deeper dive into what the emergency ordinance is provided for parklets versus, which is, you know, obviously, the encroachment on public property versus the commercial use of private property. If in fact, the expiration of the emergency ordinance means that TJ's will not be able to use the outside private property, I'd like the council to use whatever measures are possible to, either tonight, the next meeting, extend the emergency ordinance for at least six months so that TJ's or other gyms, which are unique of nail salons and other outdoor uses of private parking lots during the COVID pandemic, so that staff can look at what's an appropriate amount of private parking lot for gyms to use outside that doesn't interfere with our typical ordinance regarding a number of parking spaces for a business. Thank you very much.
I am in my mask, it's all evidence. I'm a member of TJ's, and I just want to say, it's just changed our lives. But I've worked out forever. My husband hadn't worked out. And pandemic came, and I stopped at Five Points, which I loved. And then we found TJ's, and it's just been a godsend. And my husband, because we can work outside, goes out there, and he's just been transformed. So it's really, it's a great group, and it's a wonderful opportunity, you know, in a county that really values health, I think. We're really lucky to have it. So, thank you.
Three minutes. Okay, great. Yeah, my name is Doug Karp. I'm also a member at TJ's. Here to urge you to, I think, send this ordinance back to staff to have the language about limiting it to eating and drinking establishments struck. I don't think there's a rational basis for it, and I do think it's a significant disability rights issue also. Working out outdoors, I am one of the people who work out outdoors, and people are like, hey, you're still wearing your mask. I have a son who's immunocompromised. Many of the people that I work out with are in their sixties, seventies, eighties. TJ himself actually has a strong ethic of working with older athletes. He started off working with HIV patients. And so I kind of want to emphasize that COVID is not over, it is endemic, right? It's not going away anymore than the cold or the flu are going away. Those are also endemic viruses, so this is sort of something I'm going to have to deal with in perpetuity. And so I think that, on balance, it's probably worth not singling out TJ's as the only outdoor use in this zone that is excluded. So if you just remove that, then we should be able to go on. And I think other people have talked about the importance of the community as well. And I just kind of wanted to also kind of mention my son, Aspen, who, apropos of thinking about long COVID, there's a lot of focus on the acute issues with COVID, but also, long COVID is a serious condition. Millions of Americans have it. It can totally end your career. He contracted mono, we think, in eighth grade, came, never recovered. So has myelagic encephalitis, CFS, which is a very close cousin of long COVID. Unable to finish high school. He was unable to work for, or focus for more than like an hour and a half at a time. He's now, at the age of twenty, built his strength back up to where he can take two community college classes at a time. So that's the sort of risk that those of us who are dealing with immunocompromised issues or other elevated risk are contemplating when we're like, no, we're going to be outside. And people kind of make fun of me because I wear my mask when I go in and grab weights. So I just want to urge you to think about that when you're considering this. And like, you know, let's expand it to more uses, because I'm not sure that there's any real reason to limit it. And I, you know, I think that'll do. So thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Anyone else? Going once, going twice. Is there anyone online then?
We have four hands raised. We'll start with Marla Orth. Go ahead, Marla.
I, there, I have a special request. I don't know if anybody else has noticed, but we have a major issue going on with Casa Buena and Meadow Suite. We have potholes everywhere. I've had to have my new car realigned twice. I had an accident when I was working for the town in which I was T-boned, had $8,000 of damage to my car, and untold medical issues. I have had two incidences. One where I knocked a child off a bicycle who came out between parked cars because he was trying to go out in the street. I didn't hurt him. They didn't want to report it. Was happy to do it. I had another one tonight. We have no lights. We have no sidewalks. And we keep talking about equity in town. We have the highest Hispanic population on Meadow Suite in Casa Buena, and yet we're doing nothing about the crumbling infrastructure or lack of infrastructure. I would just like to put a plea out. I'm still shaking from almost hitting this child three hours ago. We're doing a lot of pavement things around town. God bless. Thank you. But could we please just get some attention to this critical corridor, which people use going fast to get to the freeway without regard to the people who are living here? Thank you.
Okay, then we have a comment from Dana Schuman. Go ahead, Dana. Dana, whenever you're ready, you can go ahead and begin your time. Okay, well, in the meantime, we'll move on to Allison, who also has her hand raised.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, Allison.
I'm Allison Belger, wife of TJ, of TJ's Gym. And we've expressed our, you know, feelings about this issue. And I think you guys are pretty clear, there's a big component of the community who's behind wanting us to be able to continue our outdoor operation. I just want to second what a couple of the men said earlier, which has to do with expediting the process and perhaps having an emergency extension of the, you know, current permitting that is set to expire on the 31st. I don't honestly know enough about the processes behind the scenes that you guys are all very familiar with. But if there's any way that we can get some sort of kind of bridge to a longer-term solution at this point without having our membership, not have access to this really, you know, lifeline outdoors. In the meantime, we would just request that you do everything that you can to make that happen. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. We have Josh Larson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Wonderful. Thank you for the time. I am also a member of the TJ's Gym community. Have been a part of that gym community for over eleven years. It has truly changed my life. I am healthier, happier as a part of it. And the outdoor space, the continued use of the outdoor spaces is absolutely critical. I also have an immunocompromised child. She has type one diabetes. As well articulated earlier, we are not out of this with regards to COVID and any number of respiratory illnesses. So the ability for us to work out and be in the fresh air and literally, you know, causing no impact on anyone else other than, I think, setting a really great standard for health and happiness in the town of Cordera. So thank you for your time.
And Dana still has her hand up. We're going to try one more time. Dana, if you could unmute on your end. You can also email your comment to publiccomment@tcml.org, and it will be uploaded to the website and shared with the public. And aside from that, we don't have any other hands raised. It doesn't look like Dana's microphone is working.
Okay. So just one last time, does anyone want to still speak after the online? Okay, so with that, I'll close public comment. And we'll move on to item number three, which is the reorganization of the town council.
So for the reorganization, the town has a gift to present to the outgoing mayor, and I will read the message. It's presented to Charles Lee in appreciation of your dedicated leadership and service to the town of Cordera and its residents for your term as mayor from 2022 to 2023, presented on this fifth day of December 2023. Thank you so much for your time as mayor. And I think I turn it over to you in case you want to say a few words.
Sure.
Well, it's been a real honor, and it's been a learning exercise, and it's been a real point of personal growth this last year. You know, it's been important to my family and to my friends, and really taught me more about community. And, you know, I can share a couple of the moments I really loved. You know, I'm walking through on the Fourth of July, riding my bike, and all the children of the town kind of ran out and surrounded me. I couldn't even get past them, and, you know, the leader of me is like, get out of the way so that the parade can get through. But the other part of me wanted to just be like, you know, in a time of politics, you know, and we don't know where we're going. To see these kids rally around, just like, you know, and have joy was probably one of the best times I had. I think we were really productive. We brought in a new town manager, many directors, and accomplished a lot of really difficult goals, but it wasn't me. It's really the strength of our staff and the other four people at the dice. And I was just a part of it, and it's that, you know, it's just really an honor. And how it falls is just luck in some ways. But, you know, taking a little bit of ownership was really nice for me. So thank you, everyone, for letting me have this opportunity. And I am excited to hand it off, because in some ways, I feel like, you know, everybody should get four years and get an opportunity to experience this and understand, you know, what it means to really benefit the town. So, yeah, that's all I have to say. And with that, can I make a, we can either discuss it, or can I just nominate the next mayor? I would put forward Eli Beckman as our next mayor.
A second.
A little second.
Well, before we proceed, our attorney is saying we do have to take public comment on each of the items under number three. So if there's any public comment under your recognition, we would take that first.
Oh, okay. Does anyone want to say anything about me? Anyone on mic?
We don't have any hands raised or emails for this item.
Yeah.
Turn it back to you and the council if there's any comments from the council members.
Yeah, all I have to say is it's okay, because I felt like I was always doing good if I didn't get my name in the paper. So same with the residents, the less I got talked about, the better I was doing, I felt like, so.
I would just like to say that Charles Lee made the perfect mayor because he's not the type of person to actually seek out the job. But, you know, he doesn't have that, I'm mayor, kind of attitude. And that's what made him so good, was his humility and his compassion. And you missed a couple of good meetings, and we even got some tears out of this guy, so.
Well, I mean, and that's to the impact that you can really have. Like, it wasn't so much like taking, it was seeing the decisions we make and how we can really benefit and at levels that, you know, you don't always get to get a sense of, and it was emotional for me. But, you know, at the same time, I think it's important to show emotion up here and show that we really care, right? So, thanks for that.
I'd also like to say that I liked working with Charles as mayor. He brings him his whole self to the enterprise. And what's so great about that is that he understands the ordinances and the laws and the intricacies, but he also makes those decisions with his heart, and he always showed that. And it was, it was just really beautiful. So, thank you. You all are very lucky.
You two are a tough act to follow. So again, when you said, no, I really appreciate working with you last year. So, and you're not going anywhere for another year or so?
Oh, yeah, I got my lame duck here.
And I would second all those comments and just add that you're such a good person, and it comes through in everything that you do and how you approach your service on the town council. And it's just a pleasure to work with you and really appreciate what you do.
Thanks.
You inspired me, Eli.
All right, so with that, I'll close item 3A. And then open up 3B, which can the nomination stand in the second? So do we vote now and then move on to the vice mayor? I'll hand it over first.
We have to take public comment on that as well.
Public comment on, on the nomination.
To nominate Eli Beckman for mayor, and then a second from, I got councilmember Avasio.
I think we all seconded at the same time.
Why, I heard your voice first. I put you down. And that is what we will be taking public comment on.
Okay.
And we don't have any hands raised or emails.
All right, so with that, I'll close public comment, and will we take a vote now?
Yes.
All right.
So councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Avasio.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Mayor Lee.
Yes, and so will we, can we do the swap now and then do the vice mayor after? Okay.
Oh. And.
No waiting period. You're in, you're out.
Mayor Beckman. I think we could take a quick second to do photo op, if you would like, with your family.
Can we do it with Charles also?
Yeah, and that.
Yeah, well.
Okay. Sorry, Rebecca was signaling me. Okay.
Hello, hello. Yeah. All right, so that is going to bring us to item 3C on tonight's agenda, which is the selection of vice mayor. Would anyone like to make a nomination for vice mayor?
I'd like to nominate councilperson Pat Ravasio.
I would like to second that. Fantastic. We have a motion in the second. We'll open it up for public comment. Would anybody present here like to give public comment on this item? And seeing none, do we have any online public comment?
We do not have any hands raised or emailed public comment for this item.
All right, so we will bring it back to the council for a motion on Pat Ravasio as vice mayor of Cordera for a vote.
Councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Ravasio. Because it's not. Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
And Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And now we can take that small break for photo ops while I switch out the chain tags and do all that to make it official.
All right, we'll take five. We're going to take a quick recess, and we'll be back in about five minutes. Thank you. All right, and thank you, everybody. Get back into our business meeting here. So we are on item four. There are no presentations tonight, so we're going to move on to item five. That's the consent calendar. These are items that are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion. Any member of the council, staff, or the public can pull an item from the consent calendar if they'd like to. Would any members of the council like to pull a consent calendar item? Would any members of the public like to pull an item? Yes, okay, 5C is pulled. Would any members of staff like to pull any consent items? Okay, so let's see. We'll take public comment on the consent calendar. Items 5A, 5B, and 5D through H. So we're going to exclude 5C from this. Any public comment on those consent calendar items? Not seeing any. And with that, we can go ahead and take a vote on these consent calendar items. Again, that's a consent calendar, excepting item 5C.
I'll go ahead and move 5A, 5B, 5D through 5H.
Great, thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Perfect.
Okay, councilmember Casissa.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ravasio.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes, thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you, and now we'll come back to 5C. This item is adopt resolution number 482023, requesting the Metropolitan Transportation Commission to allocate fiscal year 2023-24 Transportation Development Act funding for the bike, public bike parking expansion project. And I'm going to open it up for public comment on this item.
So David McPherson, and very briefly, I pulled this item first to recognize once again how well our public works staff and town management does at applying for grants to do bicycle pedestrian projects, as well as many other projects. I don't know that the public really understands how well Cordera does to use other people's money to approve our town. And this is just one small example of using MTC funds to put bike racks in town. The second part of why I wanted to rise is simply to emphasize that the exact placement of these bike racks is essential. If non-bikers choose where the bike racks are installed, sometimes mistakes are made, and those bike racks will not be used. So I just wanted to emphasize that public works should come back to the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee and nail down to the inch where these racks will be installed so that they get the most public use. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, David. Any other public comment here tonight on this item? And I'm not seeing any, looking to do with any online hands for this item?
We do not have any hands raised from attendees or emailed public comment on this item.
Great. Any questions or comments from council members? Otherwise, we'll take a motion.
I'll kind of make the motion approve 5C.
I'll second.
Okay, councilmember Casissa. Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ravasio.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes, thank you.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes the consent calendar and brings us on to tonight's public hearing. We have one public hearing tonight. Thank you. That concludes the consent calendar and brings us on to tonight's public hearing. We have one public hearing tonight. That is item six A. Uh, this is consideration and possible action to, one, introduce an ordinance amending the Cordera Municipal Code, adding a new chapter to establish regulations for parklets located in Old Cordera Square. And two, adopt resolution number fifty three, twenty twenty three, amending the master fee schedule to establish a new license fee related to the parklet program, and I will turn it over to staff.
Yeah, there's some seats available if anyone who's standing wants to take a seat. And if we could keep the exits clear as well.
Come on in, folks. Don't be shy.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council and also members of the public. Welcome. Um, this evening you will be holding a public hearing to consider an ordinance to potentially would allow parklets in Old Cordera Square. In addition, there is a fee resolution to establish fees for the parklet program. Uh, the planning commission did discuss the draft ordinance at their meeting on November fourteenth and provided feedback to staff. And that feedback has been incorporated into the draft ordinance and also design guidelines that are before you this evening. In a summary of those, um, comments and suggestions were included as attachment four to the staff report. The town council has adopted several urgency ordinances over the past three years. And these have allowed for restaurants and other uses to expand onto public and private areas. Uh, the urgency ordinance established two new permits. The first is a temporary outdoor use permit, which allowed for businesses to expand onto private areas such as parking areas and access roads. And that is TJ's Gym, for example, obtained a TOU permit. And the other permit was a temporary operations encroachment permit, which allowed for businesses to extend onto public owned property such as parking spaces in the right of way. The urgency ordinance was most recently extended in March of twenty twenty three and is set to expire at the end of the year. The outdoor business program has been a success. The town has heard from numerous businesses that it was a lifeline during the pandemic, especially in the early days when indoor activity was limited. The town approved a total of twelve outdoor permits. Uh, seven were the temporary encroachment operations permits, which again are utilizing town owned property. And five temporary outdoor use permits were approved. And the permits that are still active are highlighted in yellow. And a list of all of these permits that were approved were included as attachment six to the staff report. Uh, this slide shows pictures of the active TOE permits. Uh, these businesses would be eligible to submit a parklet license application. And the eligible um businesses include Zins Wine Bar at two oh seven Cordera Avenue, shown on the right hand side of the slide. Uh, Lighthouse Cafe at twelve Tamalpais Drive, and then also the Bermetown Restaurant, their new location at eighteen Tamalpais Drive. Uh, the Lighthouse and Bermetown currently share a parklet. Uh, these businesses are located adjacent to one another and their hours of operation differ. Uh, the existing parklets at these locations would need to be disassembled. And the business would need to submit an application that complies with the the ordinance that is adopted by the council. Uh, the draft ordinance does include a four month grace period uh, to provide time to businesses to submit an application to the town. Uh, this slide shows the proposed boundaries of the parklet program. Uh, the draft ordinance allows parklets in Old Cordera Square, which is the commercial business area surrounding Manki Manki Park. Uh, the proposed boundaries for the program were based on the Old Cordera Square General Plan Land Use Map. Um, eligible businesses must operate an eating or drinking establishment, uh, be zoned commercial and be adjacent to public street parking. Uh, several properties within the Old Cordera Square General Plan Land Use area were removed because either they were zoned residential or because they were not adjacent to public parking spaces. Uh, as part of the application, a business would need to submit a parklet perm permit to the town. Uh, this is a one time permit that would be reviewed by the town prior to the construction of a any parklet within the right of way. Uh, the application would be reviewed by both the Public Works Department and also by the Community Development Department as well. And then the Planning Division would be reviewing the application to verify that it complies with the design standards. A seminal requirements include construction level drawings that are prepared by a design professional. Um, if the parklet will be serving alcohol, then a letter from ABC would also be required. And the application fee is a deposit of fifteen hundred dollars, which is meant to cover the cost for staff to re- review the application. And in addition, if the parklet extends beyond their boundaries, then they would also need to provide written approval from the adjacent owner and tenant. And in addition, a license agreement would be required to be executed between the business and the town. Uh, several cities in Marin County limit the number of parking spaces used as parklets on a particular block. Uh, this includes City of Novato, Larkspur, and San Anselmo. Uh, staff does not think this is necessary, given the limited number of businesses that would likely utilize this program. A staff recommends establishing a maximum parklet size of two parallel spaces or four perpendicular spaces. Uh, the draft ordinance limits parklets to the parking spaces that are located within the right of way that are adjacent to the property lines of the storefront of the business. And in instances, when the parking space extends beyond that business to the adjacent business, they would need to submit approval from the adjacent property owner and also tenant. Um, the ordinance does allow for two or more businesses to share a parklet, and these would be evaluated on a case by case basis. So uh, Bermetown and Lighthouse Cafe could elect to submit um, an application for a shared parklet. Uh, the city of Novato adopted design standards for parklets, and they began the process of developing these standards pre COVID. Uh, the standards were included as attachment eight to the staff report. And these guidelines were based on best practices in established park parklet programs developed before COVID, including San Francisco, Seattle, and Livermore. Other guidelines include standards related to the parklet surface, access and maintenance, barriers, shade structures, furniture, lighting, heating and climate control, and landscaping. And several cities in the county have adopted these standards by reference, including both Larkspur and also Fairfax. Uh, the town has developed a standalone document for design standards that would be applied to parklets. And these standards were initially in the draft ordinance that the Planning Commission discussed at their meeting in November. And following that meeting, the design standards were removed from the ordinance and instead put into the standalone document. And this will allow for these um, for easier modifications in the future, should it be determined that changes are necessary to some of the design standards. The design standards regulate the parklet surface, integrated barriers, planter boxes, landscaping, furniture, shade structure, lighting, heating and climate control, bicycle parking, sustainability and prohibitions. And many of these design standards are requirements and others are optional. So someone would not necessarily have to provide shade structures, but if they chose to, then there are certain requirements that they would need to follow. And there are some additional slides I can share if the council has any specific questions about any of the the design standards. Uh, these next couple of slides show parklets that have been constructed in Novato utilizing their adopted design standards. And the reason I've included these is to demonstrate uh, the use of high quality materials and elements within the parklets. So this parklet is at Finnegan's at eight seven seven Grant Avenue. Next slide. Uh, this is a shared parklet um, between Mai Tai and Masasushi. And these two businesses are located in the same building, so they constructed a parklet and and share it. Uh, the cost of constructing a permanent parklet would be borne by the business owner. And as such, staff feels that it makes sense to allow for a longer term. Uh, the draft ordinance allows for a term of twenty four months, which could be renewed. And most cities, um, that's common of other cities, City of Novato and also Larkspur also allow for twenty four month terms for the the initial agreement. Uh, the draft ordinance also um, would require a security deposit in the amount of twenty five hundred dollars. Um, this would be returned to the business owner at the time that the parklet is removed. And the purpose of the security deposit is to ensure that the the improvements in the right of way are are removed. Um, staff reviewed other Bay Area ordinances as as part of the development of our draft ordinance and reviewed uh, the licensing fees charged by other jurisdictions. And um, what has been recommended is 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 based on um, on that review. Uh, the town has recommended or staff has recommended a fee, an annual fee of a dollar twenty five per square foot per month. And an average parking space stall is a hundred and eighty square feet, uh, so that fee um, equates to an annual licensing fee of twenty seven hundred dollars. Um, there are prohibitions that are included in both the draft ordinance and also in the design guidelines as well. Um, the ordinance limits the use of certain areas for parklets, including any ADA parking, um, emergency or red zones um, or areas that are within a certain distance of a fire hydrant. Uh, the draft ordinance uh, does not allow for amplified sound, however acoustic music would be allowed. And in staff's review of other ordinances, we did not find any jurisdictions that allowed amplified sound um, in parklets and were unable to identify any best practices um, for regulating sound in parklets. Uh, the town's noise ordinance does, would permit relatively loud music uh, decibel levels that are permitted by the noise ordinance. And so given the proximity to residential, um, we felt that there was a greater likelihood of complaints, which was the reason why um, it was not recommended that amplified sound be allowed. And, oh, sorry, Lorena. Um, then the design guidelines also include prohibitions um, such as things that generators, open flames, water misters, tents, recoverings are not permitted. In addition, no advertising or signage would be allowed in the parklet. Options uh, before the council this evening is, uh, one, to introduce an ordinance to amend uh, the code, including an addition of a new chapter twelve point five zero. And to adopt a resolution to amend Schedule F of the Master Fee Schedule to add fees related to the Old Cordera Square Parklet Program. Or two, to introduce the ordinance and adopt the resolution with modifications. Or three, to direct staff to return with additional information and analysis and continue the discussion at a future public meeting. And that concludes my presentation.
Yeah, I just want to add, um, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Um, members of the public, we did obviously, and I want to acknowledge all the public comments that we did receive um, prior to this item, a lot of them revolving around um, the amplified music. Um, uh, I think there were other comments about the fees. Uh, there were other comments about the boundaries of the actual eligibility of um, where this parklet ordinance would apply. Um, we're prepared to talk about those um, and understand there may be additional public comment about that this evening. One thing to note, and I I want to be clear that this ordinance would apply to many eligible storefronts that may not be restaurants today. Um, could be restaurants a year from now, two years from now, five years from now. And so we're we're trying to create and craft regulations that would apply uniformly to all eligible properties um, in the boundaries of this area going forward. And so while I think there are um, that just want to lend that perspective from staff's, some of staff's recommendations here. Um, one other thing, just broader context, um, the council is has sort of, um, well, has been part of this discussion for many years now in terms of where we started. This was born in June of twenty twenty out of really, how do we quickly allow for businesses to put up something that could still allow those businesses to cater to um, customers and uh, retain some revenue, keep those businesses going, keep people employed um, during COVID. And so I think we crafted really quickly some regulations that will allow these temporary structures to be put up um, in Old Cordera Square. In fact, we allowed them elsewhere uh, in Cordera, but really the only place that really took advantage of these rules was um, in Old Cordera Square. Um, as we like to call it in some of our planning uh, documents, but it was always anticipated that these were temporary structures and we needed to come up with permanent regulations uh, that really talked to permanent structures. And so that's why you see sort of a lot of the, and this is maybe the benefit for the public too. That's why you see a lot of the rules regarding the materiality and and sort of the permanency of these structures rather than sort of the temporary um, look and feel that we have today out there. Um, and so this is, um, I just wanted to, I just wanted to add those that context as well to the discussion before we open it up then for questions and for. And and also just one last thing, acknowledge a lot of work that was put in on behalf of um, the planning team, Martha in particular. Um, RJ, who's here as well. Um, it's really, as you know, it this type of um, Amy, um, this type of uh, ordinance sort of overlaps many departments and a lot of um, thinking and and effort went in from a lot of people um, on staff. So I just acknowledge the work that everyone did on that. So thank you.
Great. Well, thank you very much, Martha, Adam, and and staff who worked on this. So how's this going to work now? We're going to open this up to the council here for questions of staff. Then we're going to open it up to public comment, and that'll be an opportunity for any members of the public, either in person or online, who would like to uh, to speak on this item, share your thoughts or ask any questions, and then we'll bring it back to the council for further discussion um, and a possible motion. So we'll start with questions from council members. Who would like to start us off?
Yes, it's green light, mate. Any questions?
Um, well, so I I had one. Uh, you know, these are for permanent parklets. Is there any vehicle to basically for for, um, you know, the we're wanting them to be permanent, we're acknowledging their permit. Is there any opportunity to discuss whether it could be like a pop up type solution for for new applicants and new properties that haven't explored it yet? Because these properties that we've identified thus far have kind of had that that other means, right? And you you know, if you're not prepared to answer it because it hasn't come up or anything, but. I would, I would just say, um, it it's something that we haven't specifically contemplated in the ordinance before you this evening. Uh, I think we've seen, um, and by now, um, you know, many potential business owners understand the concept of a parklet um, and what it would require to sort of build one, and I think can factor that into their decision making regarding whether this is the right opportunity. Um, it certainly uh, does have some upfront costs and we recognize that. Um, and so theoretically, it's something we can maybe able to consider in the future, but just not before you this evening.
So, thank you. That's it?
Yeah, okay.
Um, I, and thank you, everyone who has done so much work on this at the staff level and for the obvious interest that there is in the topic, uh, whether you're for them or against them. I appreciate everyone sending their letters and um, the great work of the Planning Commission. They had some really, really great um, uh, callouts. So, um, my question is, um, how do you envision the um, process where uh, the existing structure has to be demolished? And then the new one built, um, January first? Do um, these structures need to be gone? Or is is that plenty of time before that?
So there there is a grace period in the ordinance, so it's. So there there is a grace period in the ordinance, so it's a four month grace period, so it'd by the end of April. So those four months are designed to give a business owner time to develop plans. Because as mentioned, they do need to be developed by a either an architect or landscape architect or an engineer, so that'll take time. So those, someone would have that time to develop plans and submit it to the town to review. So the thought is the application would be reviewed and approved within those four months and then the existing parklet removed and then a new parklet constructed that that meets the the ordinance.
Right. So if they have the plans in place and they're approved, but they don't have anyone to build the new one yet, can they keep it until they have a builder to come and demolish and rebuild?
Well, as part of the discussion, if the council feels four months is an adequate time, then there you could make changes to the the ordinance to address concerns.
Okay, so just, I'm sorry, I'm beating this up, but they have four months to get the plans and build that as it stands now.
Correct.
Okay, or begin building it. Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, other questions?
You have a couple. It's an Amy question. A Amy, I'm sorry, question, can you just give a little bit background on the fees? Because we're not allowed not to charge a monthly fee, correct, based the dollar twenty five?
The California Constitution prohibits providing a gift of public funds to any individual. And there are in without giving consideration, which would be a payment. So when we look at the parklets, there will be an occupation of public land. And so, that is a public, that is public funds, that is a public benefit. So we can't benefit an individual without their paying some consideration. So I think it's important to look at this a little bit in the context of there's a lot of different types of parklets out in the universe. The original parklets in San Francisco were actually mini parks on the street that were open to everyone and 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 so forth. When we hit COVID, a lot of them were transformed because we had a public health crisis. We wanted to keep businesses in business. We wanted to allow people to dine safely without spreading disease, so there was a public purpose there. These, this current ordinance establishes a subset of the type of parklets, and those are extensions of private businesses where they're occupying land, public land. And the council and the town holds the public land in trust for the benefit of the public. So we are taking away parking spaces, for example, and there are other businesses in town who would not be getting a similar public benefit. So we do need to ensure that we're not in violation of the constitutional provision. That being said, there is certainly no set value probably for a parking space. There's probably various assessments of what that property is worth. There is also the ability to, I think council has discretion to actually determine what the fee should be, as long as it's a rational basis and it's an equitable and fair basis. In other words, if we do it by square foot, then someone who has a smaller use of public property would be paying less than someone who has a larger. So I do think council has some discretion, but we do have to remember we're holding public assets in trust. And we need to ensure their use and we need to ensure also that we're treating other restaurants and other businesses equitably.
Okay, thanks. And we can't tier that fee in the sense that we could charge less the first year and more the second year?
I think council has discretion to to do that, to I, and that is other communities have done that is they've initially had reduced fees, understanding there are capital costs for setting up the parklets. So I do think there's some discretion there, as long as it's a rational basis and we can we can show there is a calculation, there is a basis for our decision.
Okay, thanks. And then Martha, how did you come up with the bucks twenty five? I know Larkspur had a little bit different rate.
It it varies. Some cities charge per parking space, so we didn't think that was a good way to go. We base it more on square footage because you may have half a parking space. So it it kind of varied throughout the Bay Area. Most cities charge somewhere between, I would say, a dollar fifty to four dollars per square foot. Other cities charge a cost based on a parking stall and that generally was somewhere between, you know, twenty two hundred square feet or twenty two hundred dollars up to, I think, San Rafael is thirty six hundred dollars. So, you know, we looked at different char, different fees charged by other jurisdictions as as part of the the analysis.
And and just to add to that, I think we consciously also wanted to keep be at the lower end of those fees for these particular parklets in Old Corder Madera Square. Acknowledging and and that over, I think this goes back even to the beginning of the conversation about parklets during COVID. I think the idea at that time was always, look, this may be ultimately turn out to be a good thing for this area of town. We talked a lot about how do we activate this part of, specific part of Corder Madera. You know, we have a lot of our restaurants in our two shopping centers, which is great. But how do we also activate sort of the more historic center of Corder Madera? And so acknowledging that, I think setting the fees, we've embedded some of those public benefits and overall policy goals of economic development into those fees and keeping them really at the very low end when we're setting the fees for essentially what Amy was talking about, those costs per square foot of of basically that improved public space, which is obviously taxpayer money went into building out the the curb and gutter and the pavement and the improvements in that area. So I just wanted to add that.
Thanks. And then the fifteen hundred dollars of the application fee, how did you determine that?
Generally for other type of encroachment permits, there's a a deposit that is collected. And I believe it is fifteen hundred dollars is the current deposit for encroachment permits for it. So it's, it, the goal is to cover the cost of staff time. So if less money was used reviewing an application, then the applicant would be refunded the money. So it's, we anticipate that's how much it's going to cost to review these applications and we base it on.
And then on the existing parklets, if there's a component that meets the design standard, standards, does that have to be demolished or can that be left? So I'm sorry, does, in other words, does the whole thing have to be demolished or again, can pieces remain?
Pieces could be reused in the the parklet design. All of the current parklets have K rails, those orange plastic large things that would all need to be removed. Those aren't allowed in the the new ordinance. So these parklets do need to be disassembled, but if there are components of the parklet that comply with the what's adopted and those can be used.
Okay, thanks. I have more for you. Get on a roll. On the music part, part, I know in the new ordinance, we would not allow music. Correct, but we can change that. I know when we come back for comments. Have there been any complaints regarding Zins with the music there?
As far as I'm aware, there have not been any complaints for the music at Zins. We have occasionally received complaints for some of the music at the square for those larger events. And then also, I know we've received some complaints about some of the music at the Cafe Verde.
Okay, thanks. And the work parameters set around under the temporary ordinance for music, correct?
Correct. When this last was discussed at the council in March, Zins was allowed to have amplified sound and there were certain parameters as far as number of times per month, allowable hours and the number of musicians. So that was included as part of the last TOE permit approved for Zins.
Okay, and Amy misses, you're charged for a little after the twenty four months?
Well, you could, would continue to pay that annual assessment, but there would not be a a fee associated with that.
Okay, one last one. On, I'm going to say wrong, Kiko's on the taco place. If we wanted to include that, is there a way to do that? I, because I know what you're saying, it's in a, right now it's zoned residential. If we wanted to change that to include them to allow parklet, what would the process be for that?
So we wouldn't necessarily have to rezone the site, if that's what you're asking. The council could direct staff to modify the current boundaries to extend further to capture. I think there's maybe a couple parcels and then the the keto, so you likely would want to extend it so it's a contiguous boundary.
Okay, and that's something we could do tonight?
Um, yes.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thank you, Fred, for asking several of my questions. Just one remaining on the on the amplified music, since we've, they've been amplifying the music gently at Zins for these years without complaints. Is it possible to just create a decibel standard where we measure it and make sure that the music is not too loud?
We discussed that internally and had some concerns because there's an existing noise ordinance that establish establishes decibel levels. So the, I think what we would recommend is that we don't create a new decibel for parklets, but rather add operating standards if the council desired to allow music.
Can you just elaborate what you mean about operating standards?
So you could limit the number of times a month or limit the number, the hours when amplified sound could be occurring, things such, similar to what was added to the last TOE permit approved for Zins.
Thanks. I think my only other question, I just want to make sure that I'm not conflating this issue with a different one. So this, these parklets that we're discussing in this ordinance night, that only relates to parklets that are for uses of dining, like eating and drinking, right? So if we wanted to talk about like separate outdoor uses on like, say, not public parking spaces, but like a private parking lot or something like that, that's a separate discussion that we could have in another time, but but it's not this issue. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure I had that straight. Okay, other than that, I think I had only other questions that have been already asked. So that is it for questions from the council. So we're now going to open this up to public comment. Can we just get a quick show of hands of how many folks would like to comment on this item? Okay, we've got a good number. And do we have hands up online too, Lorena? Okay.
This time.
Okay, I'm guessing we'll get some hands online too. So we're going to go ahead. I'm just going to ask folks, if you wouldn't mind, please just queue up behind the microphone if you'd like to speak on this item. And we're going to go two minutes per person. Lorena is going to put a timer up on the screen for us. And basically, you you'll have two minutes to ask any questions or share your thoughts. And then it's not like a back and forth dialogue. Basically, we're going to take all the public comment and then we're going to close public comment. And then the council is going to be able to discuss points that were brought up by members of the of the or ask staff to chime in and answer any questions that were raised. But I just wanted to kind of let folks know what the format is. So with that, we will go ahead and if you wouldn't mind starting this off.
Ripa, thank you. Sally Dominguez, Christmas Tree Hill. I love where I live. Our first big shout out to the planners during COVID, you guys did an amazing job. Like to be able to not only vitalize the neighborhood, but like allow us to celebrate during COVID. And it actually did revitalize the neighborhood. I did speak at the last thing, so I'm not going to bat on about that. But, you know, we've all seen the amazing community that has built around the parklets, around old town square, whatever we're calling it. Wanted to speak as a local musician. I'm in two bands. I perform all over Marin, except in Piccolo Pavilion, because that is run by the council and pretty carefully curated to a very small number of bands. The opportunity that has been provided for a bunch of local musicians to perform at Zins has been incredible. In fact, Richard and I perform there for free because it excites us so much to have community around us. We charge everywhere else, but Zins we don't. Because it's an amazing feeling and I'm, I think a lot of the room here are part of that community. Firstly, it won't work with acoustic. You won't hear us. You can barely hear us with the amplification, which has been low. But also the fact that nobody has complained is really key. In fact, it packs out and people even sit across the road to hear it, not just us, everybody that plays. So this amplification is for the local community. We absolutely love it. And because there have been no complaints, I I would even encourage you to reconsider the limits that you put on the last approval where Zins had to cut us back completely and cut pretty much everybody else back. Because for the community, this is an amazing chance to gather. For the people that don't drink, they still come and sit around. You know, it's not even about Zins's business. It's just about community and it's about music. The fact that there've been no complaints, just hope that you will consider just allowing that to keep on happening and at a decent rate of happening. Also, I'd love the fees to be super low. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, Sally. Next, please.
Steve Silvermoss on Christmas Tree Hill. I am actually two blocks up from Zins. Never had any noise issues with my place. I see a lot of the stuff you're talking about is we're modeling ourselves after some of the, some of the surrounding communities, Larkspur and San Anselmo. We are nowhere close to Larkspur, San Anselmo, as far as a vibe. If the vibe is what you're looking for of San Anselmo and Larkspur and Mill Valley, Zins is what you're looking for. You need to model Corder Madera, you need to relax some of the regulations and encourage the places like Zins to come here. We're never going to catch those guys with the current regulations, if you have them more restrictive. Four month grace period, I caught some kind of conflicting information talking about when the four month ended. So one time you said that it was a four month to approve the plans and finish construction. And then later you said four months to approve plans and beg, begin construction. I think that needs to be formalized a little bit. I would advocate that the four months should be for approving the plans only or maybe beginning construction. But to complete construction may be an unrealistic expectation of people. Eliminating Keto's Taco, the only restaurant. There's not too many restaurants between downtown Corder Madera and Larkspur. Eliminating Keto's is a big punch in the gut for those guys. They're starting a new restaurant. You can do everything you can to encourage new restaurants. If you do anything to hinder someone, you're just going to hurt all of us. Amplified music, just because other towns don't allow amplified sound, doesn't mean Corder Madera shouldn't. If you're, I just don't understand the contention. If your contention is that someone can tell the difference between amplified music and acoustic music versus decibels, I I don't understand that logic. So amplified music at a proper decibel level is really needs to be what the restriction is on that. And finally, the fees, you can't give away the public lands, I understand that. But we also cannot step over a dollar to pick up a nickel. If you have businesses that are thriving, you're going to increase the revenue to the city much more than the the money you generate from fees.
Great, thank you. Thanks for Steve, next up, please.
Good evening. My name is Matt Kaufman. I also live on Christmas Tree Hill. I think my my main comment is we need to create community here in Corder Madera. And I will say that the town square in particular is a little lackluster. And at times it feels a little quiet there. It's nice having a bustle around. It's nice having the parklets out there. It's nice hearing the music. It's nice hearing people talk. It's nice hearing the community. That's what we all want. We want community here. We don't want to shoot it away with extra regulation that isn't smart. There's a lot of cases here where this is not smart regulation. The noise, if there's never been a complaint, why are we putting something in here about noise? That makes absolutely no sense. If we already have a decibel requirement or limit, let that be the noise ordinance. We don't need to have anything in here restricting businesses on noise. I think in terms of the gift of public funds, I heard the public purpose, there has to be a public purpose from the city attorney. The public purpose here is to build community. I'm all for making a half a cent per square foot. We don't need to make money on these parklets. In fact, the the town is already making money on these parklets. There is tax revenue that comes in from sales of people that are eating, drinking, dining on these parklets. We're making revenue on these parklets. I would argue every day of the week that this is not a gift of public funds. And if we need to charge some nominal amount, a half a cent, whatever it is, per square foot, square meter, whatever you need to do, then do that. But let's not nickel and dime these small businesses who have really stuck with us through COVID. This could be a a square that is just deserted. We're lucky that we still have these businesses that are willing to invest in the town, invest in the square. Let's build that. Let's encourage that. Let's not hinder that. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Next, next speaker, please. Anybody else want to speak in person here?
Hi, Gene Burns, Christmas Tree Hill. One of the things that concerned me was the four month limitation, and I know that it was mentioned a little bit earlier. Last time I checked, if we're really lucky, January through April is going to be rain. So let, oh, I say, let's design, let's construct and let's do everything during the rainy season. Yay, that ought to really, really help us. And so I'm sorry for the sarcasm, but I just don't think this was very well thought out. So I really hope if you're going to put limitations on how these folks that are building a thriving community that that don't have complaints and that we already have ordinance on, that we give them the opportunity to meet the design standards and really build a kick-ass partlick, part- partlet. So that we can all enjoy it and enjoy what it looks like because it's just doesn't make sense to, I mean, January to April, just come on. Nobody builds in January to April. So, you know, reconsider, please.
Thank you, Jean.
Hi, Kim Cheadle. I'm also on Christmas Tree Hill, and I want to echo what Sally and pretty much everyone else said about creating community. And really driving people to Corder Madera. We wanna, we should be focused on helping small businesses thrive and really getting this sense of community, and that's something that I think Zins has done, excuse me, a really good job of. Um, one thing that wasn't mentioned was for existing businesses, perhaps we could grandfather in. Allow them, since there haven't been any complaints, why break or why try to fix what isn't broken? That's pretty much.
Thank you very much. Do you have any other speakers here tonight?
Um, hi, I'm here representing Zins Wine Bar. So first, I'd like to thank um the city and the planners and the town council um for all of the hard work. Because we've been here with you and it's been a lot. And um to the community, I'm very taken aback by the support. We hear it, we know it. But to see you all here tonight um is really touching. So thank you, all of you. Um, so a few things um in terms of the parklet is we're looking forward to making this permanent so that we can move on with our life. Uh, it's been a lot. Um, we do think that the fees are difficult. Um, any fees are difficult at this point, uh, because we're looking at a capital investment that is a lot, you know, fifteen thousand, twenty thousand. Um, every day that we push this out, the cost of those materials is going up and the cost of building is going up. Um, so we do ask for some sort of reduction wherever we can, understanding the laws. Um, a graduated fee structure would be appreciated. I do know that Fairfax is charging six hundred dollars per parking spot annually. So there is a range, and I understand that. And and we do appreciate you looking at the lower side of it. The other piece is the music. The fact is, the music is the one thing that drives our business to a measure that makes our business thrive. Uh, without the music, we actually might not do the parklet if we can't have amplified music. And we would actually ask that we have no restrictions on the nights that we do that. Uh, knowing that people go out only Thursday, Friday, and Saturday night, sometimes we'd like to do a Sunday afternoon. We have special requests for funerals and weddings and birthday parties, and we would not we would like to not have to jump through a hoop every time we want to have a little bit of music on the side to encourage people to just have a good time. Um, our music is
That seems, sorry, I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap up. We have to do the same amount of time for everyone.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you for all the consideration.
Thank you so much. And Patsy and anyone else, if you have more to say, you're always welcome to. Any further comments to public comment at tcmail.org, and we'll include those in the public record and make sure that they get to all council members. Thank you so much. Next up, we've got David.
Thank you again, and my well-informed and articulate neighbors have said everything that I could have said and then some, and so I appreciate all of those comments. I think that the expiration or the the date that the ordinance should take effect is at least six months. Perhaps with an additional discretionary period that staff can exercise for completion of construction. But we just, we understand that hiring the design professionals, getting construction uh estimates, et cetera, et cetera. It is, let's let's look at six months. In terms of the music, it's all been said very well, but here's an interesting ironic thing that we've experienced. I worked with Kyle and Zins and and Martha and Adam to get the temporary uh encroachment permit so that they could continue having the amplified music. And I encouraged Kyle to purchase a a decibel meter. Well, the sound of trucks and cars at that intersection are substantially higher than the sound of the subtle amplified music. So to adopt the ordinance as it's uh currently proposed would value truck noise over the sound of subtly amplified music, which is, we know you don't want to do that. I think some of the design standards are a little bit too restrictive. I know that a tremendous amount of time and effort has gone into looking at what other towns have done. But limiting the overhead shade structures to umbrellas. If, I think that that might be too restrictive. I I don't know that you can redesign it on the fly now. Uh, but I'd like to see some flexibility so that more semi-permanent shade structures that can be seasonal in nature could be adopted.
Thank you very much, David. Any other speakers in person tonight? Anyone else? Lorena, do we have any hands up online for folks who'd like to speak?
Yes, we do. We have four hands raised. Oh, five. Sorry, we'll start with Peter.
Hi there, uh, Peter Mousick. Uh, I live on Redwood and Christmas Tree Hill about uh lockaway from Zins. Just wanted to say that I am a huge fan of the parklets. I think it has been great for the community. It's been great for the town. It's been great for the businesses. Um, and I supported all the the live music. I support Keto's in Bermetown and the Lighthouse. Um, you know, we've got kind of a struggling downtown, and I think it really is great to have businesses doing well there and to have the convenience of being able to walk and not drive and to have the opportunity to just come out randomly and meet neighbors and see them. Um, I wanna emphasize that um the affordability is a big issue. Um, again, our downtown hasn't been exactly thriving, and I would like to see it easy as possible for businesses to survive. I don't know much about um what the fees mean to them or what the costs of construction are. Um, but I hope you'll work with the businesses to make sure that it um that works out for them. And uh I'm sympathetic to the neighbors. I know there's been some questions about parking, but you know, I think those things are all solvable between the public parking spaces we have and people walking just a little bit further. And I do want to add that not knowing a lot about construction, it still sounds like that four-month time period is probably a little rushed. I would like people, the the businesses to be able to continue their businesses relatively undisrupted. And the idea that they might have to tear it all down and rebuild it and everything seems like um an awful lot of work when we really would like to enjoy the continuity of what we have now that works so well. Um, and again, thank you for uh all of your work on this issue and uh looking forward to turning this from emergency into permanent. Thanks.
We have another hand raised from Richard.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Um, kind of low, if you could just speak up a little.
Thank you for giving the opportunity here to speak tonight. I'd like to ask the city to pass a resolution or come out with a public statement condemning the terrorist action of the Israeli government against the Palestinian people.
Sorry, I'm sorry. This is public comment specific to a particular agenda item. Uh, we had a uh for public comment for items not on our agenda earlier in the meeting. So I have to ask you to submit your comments that are not posted to this item via email to publiccomment@tcmail.org.
This isn't the opportunity, the time to ask why we tolerate Jews sucking on babies' penises?
Thank you. Thanks, Lorena.
Fuck Jews. White fucking power, hail Hitler.
We have um William Cooper.
All right, so. All right, so. Okay, so we we've ended that comment because it's not your main to the to the topic at hand. Okay, thank you. We're gonna proceed with public comment.
We have William Cooper. William?
Evening, City Council. Thank you for having me. Uh, you you can hear me correctly?
Yes.
Correct, I'm sorry. Right, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, my name is William Cooper. I'm the owner of TKD Enjoyers, just right outside of city limits. Um, as far as building a sense of community, I feel like the easiest way for us to do that is gonna be to make sure that um niggers, kikes, and mudskins aren't allowed in our
Right, come across this comment, please.
White power, a white ethno-state is how we're all gonna have a sense of community and thrive off of each other. So let's just get rid of these niggers and kikes and uh our country will be
has adopted a harassment-free workplace policy, which applies to council meetings. It is against town policy to engage in verbal conduct that denigrates an individual because of their race, color, gender, religion, sexual orientation, age, national origin, disability, or other protected category. The council welcomes comments and criticisms from the public about the town's policies, programs, and services, or the acts or omissions of the town council. Engaging in verbal conduct that violates our workplace policy also violates the council's rules and disrupts the orderly conduct of our meeting. It interferes with the council's ability to accomplish its business in a reasonably efficient manner by distracting council and the public from the topic at hand. The remarks also interfere with the rights of other members of the public who wish to speak and interfere with the ability of those present to listen and understand town business and proceedings and may constitute or contribute to employment or other discrimination. I have stopped the clock on your comments. This is your warning. You're welcome to continue with your public comment if you refrain from violating our rules and disrupting our meeting. If you cannot comply with our rules, we will not allow you to further disrupt the meeting. Any town employee or member of the public in the room may be excused from the room during the speaker's comments.
We're going to proceed with, we have. Okay, um.
Yes, so the speaker may continue speaking to understanding the warning that was just given.
Doesn't look like he's on here.
Yeah, um, I would just say, you know, go MTV dot com, GTVflyers.
Lorena, can you mute them? All right, we've given you a warning that you are violating the rules and disrupting our meeting. You continue to disrupt our meeting, so we will remove your ability to further comment. And I just want to apologize to all the members of the public who are here tonight and watching online for what we just had to listen to. We're gonna continue with public comment uh on the item at hand, which is really important to our community. Um, Lorena, do we have any other hands up on Zoom?
We have four more, and I'll um do all this stuff so that.
All right, and before we start, I'd like to, I'd like to ask the town attorney, is there a a way to apply this warning uh en masse? Uh, can this, can we, that we've just given, apply to future public comment, or do we have to repeat the warning for each individual speaker?
We we have informed the public that we have a non-discrimination policy, that we will adhere to this policy. And now every speaker is on notice. If you cannot adhere to our policy, we will consider you to be in violation of our rules and disrupting our meetings, so you will not get a second opportunity. If you can abide by council rules without disrupting the meeting, you're free to speak. If you can't, you are not.
Great, thank you, and Lorena, we can proceed with public comment.
Okay, we have Amir Rosenbaum.
Good evening, City Council members of the public. I just wanna apologize for having to sit through that, just like the rest of you. Um, and pertaining to the agenda, just making sure I'm coming through all right, correct?
Yes.
Perfect, I see my timer, fantastic. Um, I would like, members of the public, I again, in relation to this agenda item, to look up Mitsitsa Beppe on NYC.gov, oral circumcision, Jews suck baby.
Meet the speaker, please. All right, we can give you a warning that you're violating. To disrupt our meetings, we will remove your ability to comment further. I just want to make the, make sure the members of the public understand, we are legally bound to hear from every public commenter uh who wishes to give public comment regardless of how horrific the things that they wish to comment are. But we do have, as we've seen tonight, policies in place to make sure that we're able to maintain a safe environment for our our employees here, our council members, and members of the public. Lorena, do we have more hands up? Okay.
We're getting a few more. Ursula?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Phenomenal. Um, do I have to give my address and whatnot, or can I just speak?
Can you let us know what street you live on?
Yeah, I live on Sandpiper Circle.
Great, thank you.
Phenomenal. Um, uh, I had a whole thing I wanted to say, but I I would like to caution you um as a practicing attorney. I have seen several cases with city councils getting sued for not allowing people to speak. I understand you have policies in place.
Yeah.
Uh, no, fuck you, stupid fucking kite.
Okay, yeah, can you mute that, please? Sure, all right, we're gonna call a quick recess if you don't mind, and we're gonna confer with our town attorney. I'm sorry, folks, we'll be back in in a few minutes here. All right, so we're gonna resume our meeting here. Um, again, we are on item six of tonight's agenda, which is a public hearing about um allowing parklets going forward on a permanent basis uh in Corder Madera. And I want to thank our audience members for bearing with us tonight. As you can tell, we've had some uh unforeseen uh challenges. We're gonna resume public comment now. Um, and Lorena, I will turn it over to you. Um, if there are other speakers online who wish to speak.
We have four hands raised, and I am seeing kind of a pattern, so I'll be prepared to take whatever.
And and Lorena, with the with the warning that's been given, if you hear a comment that violates our policy, you're welcome to go ahead and mute them.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So we have Anders Breivik. Oh, and give me one second.
Recording in progress.
Sorry about that. I had paused the recording.
Thank you.
Yes, hello. Yes, hello. Yes, hello. Thank you for giving the top opportunity to speak. Uh, we need to make our community more welcoming and more acceptable. Um, I I think the biggest thing that's, you know, hindering us having peace in our society is all these wild niggers and fucking
Okay, Lorena, please mute that commenter. It's like, it's a group, they coordinate online.
Okay, we have um Paul Kay.
Pretty nutty.
Paul, go ahead.
Hello? Okay, I'm a resident here in Corder Madera. Uh, Mayor, you live at in Corder Madera. Thank you. Fuck the Jews.
Sounds like this speaker may be having technical difficulties. Can we move on?
Okay, we'll move on to Amy Pharaoh. Give me one second. Okay, that sentence is no longer on here. Sadie and Sadie, I think I'm gonna the way the
Yep, no, I get you.
Okay, so I do have to do, allowed to speak. Go ahead, Sadie.
Hi there, thanks. My name is Sadie, Sadie N. Veard. Thank you so much for, you know, not being a retarded nigger, 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 nigger.
Leave this comment, please.
We have Tony Winkle. And I think after this, I'll turn the mic over to our attorney.
Okay.
Tony Winkle, go ahead. Doesn't look like
Good evening. Good evening. I'm here. Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Oh, wonderful, wonderful. I've been listening. It's just been appalling what's going on. Uh, I can't believe it. I've been a resident in the city for a couple decades now. I'm a hard-working member of the community. And and these flyers were thrown in my driveway, and it doesn't provide a safe environment, especially for people like the ADL, which was established in nineteen thirteen to protect a Jewish.
Thank you.
Okay, um, give me one second. I'm turning it over.
Yes, um, the council may uh may set reasonable rules and regulations for public comment, including the total amount of time for comment. So if council would like to take a motion and cut off public comment on this time, I believe we had robust public comment from those present in the room as well as robust public comment from those present in the room as well as from members online. I believe we've taken close to an hour of public comment, so uh I think the council could entertain a motion at this time.
Thank you, Amy. Be happy to entertain that motion. Before we do, I just wanna make one more call to see if there's anyone here in person who, who's decided to speak and would like to. Yeah.
Yeah, real quick, um, Matt Rogers, I live seventy-eight steps from Zin's Wine Bar. I live two hundred and eight steps from uh Berma Town and I live about two hundred and sixty steps from uh Kito's. I just wanna put in a shout out for Tacos. Um, the Berma Town in, in the previous location had, I think, one of the um emergency use permits to have a parklet in front, and I'd highly recommend to the, the town and the planners and the council that Kito's be afforded that same opportunity. It's fantastic, those guys are great. They're, they're trying to start a new business. It's um, it's well needed. I don't drink wine, so I, I like the taco place. Um. I love, I love, I, I- I come to Zin's a lot too. Um, cuz I listen to music at Zin's and I can't hear it from my, I actually wish I could hear it from my backyard or from my front porch, so um if you could consider extending the opportunity for Kito's to have a parklet, that would be great too, thanks.
Thanks so much, Matt. Okay, with that, we've heard from everybody uh present here in the public who'd like to speak, and we've heard from a number of online commenters. We're gonna close public comment and bring this item back to council um for discussion and a possible motion. Um, I again wanna thank uh the members of the public who are here. We're gonna get back now to the substantive discussion that you came here for. Appreciate your uh, your patience and appreciate your, your taking the time to be here and participate. Yes, Marina.
Sorry to interrupt, we do have to have a motion um on the fact that we're ending public comment.
Thank you.
I'll second your motion, okay.
Okay, so uh we have a motion and a second. Uh, council member Casissa?
Yes.
Council member Lee?
Yes.
Council member Thomas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ravazio?
Yes.
And Mayor Beckman?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
Great, thank you. Um, so, okay, so we're gonna get back to the item at hand here. I will just say that there's a reason that people have to call this filth in, and that's because that's not who we are here in Corte Madera, so that reflects well on us, but anyway, um, I do wanna just highlight um one specific question that we heard in public comment um to hopefully get some clarifying information from staff, and then we can open up uh to a more uh wide-ranging discussion from the council. The, the question that we heard a couple times was if we could please get a clarification on that four-month timeframe.
So the parklet would not need to be constructed within the four months, but the existing parklet would need to be removed, so that, after it's removed, then, but, but it doesn't need to be done by that point.
Okay. Okay, so they don't, they basically have to have deconstructed and applied for the new permit if they wished to by that point?
Correct.
Okay, got it, thank you.
That's how the draft ordinance currently reads, the council might elect to make changes to that.
Got it, okay, thank you. All right, so I'm gonna open this up now to uh council members um for discussion. Who would like to start us off? Fred, go ahead.
First of all, I want to thank staff, especially Martha, you know, Adam did a lot of work on Amy, um RJ, but I appreciate um, out of work you did, um, cuz I know it's been a long haul. I also appreciate the community, they always really show up um, I get emotional, sorry, we're really proud of them. So I appreciate that, and Patsy, the only thing we're missing tonight is wine. It's the only thing we're missing. Um, with that, in the same of public comment, reading comments and having some discussions with um Martha and Amy. So I see, I mean, for changes to the ordinance. Once I like to see, it's, it's stemmed, I'm going to include Kiko's tacos. Again, I'm not sure how to go about doing that. Um, I'll just give you the changes and then open it up for the rest of the council. Um, I would like to include um music, the amplified music. I think the day should be extended to Thursday through, um, through Saturday, but I'll leave that up to staff to figure out days and also hours. Um, I think you still, you still need to monitor if there's any of those issues that do arise. Um, one question, Martha, is that I think it brought up, are other cities charging on a per per space basis versus per square footage?
It, it depends. Some charge a fee based on the parking space. For instance, um, I think San Salmo is around twenty-five hundred dollars per space. Uh, Santa Fe is around thirty-six hundred dollars per space, and then other cities charge based on the area used for the parklet. We felt it made sense to charge based on the, the area used because not all parklets use a full space. So that we thought was the, the most fair way, so that people weren't paying for a parking space in entire space if they weren't using the entire space.
Okay.
Oh, and also the city of Mill Valley, they charge for lost revenue uh for loss of parking, so they charge twenty-two fifty per day. And their ordinance is different than others in that it's a seasonal program, so it's only six months of the year.
Okay, so Diamond, we would like to see us go to a tier system, charge fifty cents square foot for the first year, which gives um businesses the opportunity for capital improvements for the outlay of capital, and then go to a dollar a square foot after that. And then the other part I'd like to see is I'd like to see a six-month extension instead of a four-month extension. And if I have this right, within that six months, Zins can still leave his parklet up, correct? He doesn't have to tear it down January first?
Correct, the, yes.
Okay, and then the other thing I'd like to see, but this may, it may revolve around the budget or Amy doing some more research. The revenue coming in from those parklets, I wanna say is minimal. It may be around ten to twelve thousand or so a year, plus or minus. That's off the top of my head. Um, I would like to see if there's a way where if that money, say that money going into the general fund, well, there are two ways. Either it goes in the general fund, but it gets reallocated to the uh quarter of your chamber. Because to me, we're the business that's paying for those spaces. By giving, allocating that money to Chamber, the Chamber's promoting businesses. So I think that's just a good way to do with that money, especially since it's a minimum, minimum amount um on the overall budget wise. I don't know how to go about doing that, or if we can do it. Amy's looking perplexed, and it may be a question for another day. Those are the changes I'd like to see, thanks.
Okay, thanks Fred. Uh, comments from other council members?
Um.
No, please.
Okay.
Ressa.
All right. Um, so I was going to also say that because um the human voice or maybe an acoustic guitar, you know, couldn't be heard over uh traffic noise. And, you know, sometimes performers will use um recorded accompaniments or um an electric keyboard. Um, those things are somewhat amplified. Um, I think that we should want to look at maybe the decibel level. However, one thing is that we're thinking of it now with a limited number of spaces actually having music. In the future, there may be more, and so then it could get a bit noisy. So I think that what staff was trying to do was to create an ordinance that fit now and a possible future. And um, I just wanna say I appreciate that. Um, but I think it is something, the, the noise, I can understand why you would wanna have some uh small amount of amplification. But I think that it's something that, you know, we would have to visit, revisit as other businesses start to have music because if it's going so well for Zins, it's likely that others are gonna wanna start doing it too. Um, so that's one thing. Um, and then um in the ordinance, there's, and this is in no particular order, there, we don't have a specific minimum height for uh planner boxes. And I would, I think that since people, there's, there's a place in the ordinance that says um small, shorter ones are not good, but who's, you know, who, just one person, one that's small is large to another, whatever. So I think it's better just make it really specific. So we'll take what Novato does and said, to say not less than thirty inches. Uh, not less than thirty, but not more than forty inches in height. I would suggest that, some other number, someone else could, you know, I'm, I'm not married to those numbers, but just that we need to be specific. And then um I do think that people need a little more time, four months probably isn't enough time to, you know, get everything in place for the new um, the new parklet, so I would vote for six months. And let's see, I think I think everything else um has been spoken about that I thought was, you know, really important. Oh, I guess one other thing is just that um we did get a lot of letters about parking concerns. And, you know, I have experienced that, you know, trying to park in the neighborhoods, say behind Berma Town. And so, and I don't live there, but for people who don't have a um a driveway or a um garage, you know, that could be a bit of a problem. So I think that we need to somehow think of how we're going to enforce or encourage um strongly that the employees park in the public places since uh parking is being taken away. And uh that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Comments from other council members?
You're welcome.
Uh.
Either.
Well, I mean, so, so for me, I can support live music uh that's amplified. I can support a six-month uh grace period. And uh, you know, for me, uh, while I love Kito's and any, you know, startup that comes out of that quaint little place, I think, you know, I think about Berma Town in there and how it was really not that everybody could go there, right? You really had to commit, it was like, and it made it more valuable in that experience and, and quaint. And so I kinda like it as like a pop-up beater, you know, incubator, you know, and I hope that e- every restaurant can graduate out into a larger um, you know, old park is it, and the reason I'm saying that is because unfortunately, my experience of driving by that particular location while is, there was safety issues. I think we have had safety complaints and issues regarding that one because of the proximity to the traffic and the widths and everything. And so I, we've talked about it before and I don't know that it's um appropriate to carry it down that road, and I think I've stated that on record before. So um, and, and so really, we're making a land use decision, not a decision about one of our beloved uh companies that are operating out of the property, right? And so I just wanted to share that. Um, yeah, so those are my, my, my thoughts on it.
Okay, thanks Charles, Pat.
Okay, um, yes, first of all, I'm in pretty much an agreement. I do think uh the six month would get us into the good weather months, which would allow the construction. I thought that was a really good comment. And it is gonna be an El Niño year, we hear, so um thank you for that. I did wanna uh direct one comment, I don't think she's still here, but Sally mentioned that the council does the concerts in the summer concert series, and we actually do not. It's the community foundation that uh puts together those concerts. So if anybody has questions about those, it's, it's, it's not us um on that. Um, as far as the fees go, I agree with Fred that we should really dramatically uh reduce these fees. Um, I looked online today and a number of cities, San Francisco passed a major waiver of its fees in order to help small businesses, as did Santa Monica, as did Santa Cruz, and even San Rafael. So I really think we should minimize those fees. I'll take Fred's fifty cents and go to twenty-five. To start, and, and maybe it graduates, um, because the longer you have this beautiful place in working, um, there, there would be um more revenue and less uh, less cost. So I don't know exactly the details of that, maybe it would be worked out later after we have the first year, and then we come back a year from now and and figure out what we, whether we actually need that money, since we're not actually offsetting any lost revenue, since the parking spaces are not um monitored or, or fees aren't used. Um, and I would also say, I'm, I mean, even the, the fees to apply are higher than some communities. The fifteen hundred, um, I do agree with the twenty-five hundred dollar deposit just because it could fall on the town to, if it gets dilapidated ten years from now and, and the business vacates, the town gets stuck with that cost. So I guess that one um I, I would support. Um, but I think maybe going halvesies on that fifteen hundred to start. Um, and maybe if it becomes more complicated and, and we have problems with somebody, we can charge more. I don't know if we can work that out tonight. Um, the question of amplified music, I totally agree that music should be prioritized above chainsaws, leaf blowers, trucks, and all those things. The music should not be penalized. I agree with Patsy that there's no reason why you should have to go to the town every time you wanna turn on a speaker if we're not getting any complaints. So I don't think there should be restrictions at all on, um, I mean, except for what our current noises, I think we have a quiet time at ten PM and um you're not allowed to start running that chainsaw till what, eight? So music should just follow the same rules as the rest of our, our noise. And I, I don't think there's any reason why we should be penalizing people who want to play music. The mention of funerals, I thought, oh yeah, what, we can't, you know, I mean, and then, so I think that was it, oh, on Kito's, okay, Kito's, it's not Tico's. Those of us with dyslexia have been calling them Tico's because Tico's tacos just rolls and Kito's tacos, not so much, but so the reason I think, Charles, that there were um problems there before and complaints was because um, the Berma Town thing was really built out with a big roof and a big structure, and it blocked sightlines so that people were pulling out of D and K and not being able to see what was coming. I know, I go to D and K, I had that experience. But I went to uh Tico's on Saturday night and talked to the owners and they have no interest in putting a roof on it. They just want a place for people to sit, and I think they would even be willing, and they like the idea of instead of building a parklet, build a sidewalk and move the people close to the building. So I think there are ways to, to engineer this so that it would be helpful um for uh the safety of the situation and would give this business a chance. I mean, this outdoor seating is probably critical to whether or not they succeed. And these are owners who, they live in um Half Moon Bay. They're commuting here every day to make this happen, so I think we can figure out, I think we should figure out a way to accommodate them in this program. And I think that's it.
Great, thank you, Pat. Um, I largely agree with uh the points that have been made. Um, first of all, I'm just like, picture, I'm really glad that we're making parklets permanent. Covid sucked in a lot of ways, and I think that parklets are one of the few good things that have come out of it. So I'm really glad that, that we're recognizing that as a community and, and, you know, creating a framework to make parklets a, a pertinent thing in our community going forward. I think that's a big win for, this isn't a big win for the community. Um, so on the kind of four buckets of like uh issues that we've talked about here, one, fees. I, I really appreciate the work that staff has done in, in doing the thorough survey of what other, you know, jurisdictions are charging, but making sure that we're gonna consciously keep ours on the lower end. This is not like some get-rich scheme for Corte Madera. I think, you know, we gotta do right by taxpayers who paid for the road. And truth be told, they may not be here tonight, but there are a lot of residents who actually want those parking spaces back. Um, so I just think we, we are, you know, it's, it's a bouncing game, and I think that, I think it's fair to say that there's gotta be some, some level of fee just to compensate, you know, the, the taxpayers for the public property that's, that we're letting private businesses use, even as we recognize that those private businesses are doing working wonders with it, honestly, thank you. Um, you know, the, the space that you created in the community and, and also Lighthouse in Berma Town is just fantastic. Um, so definitely wanna, wanna respect and continue to encourage that. As far as amplified music goes, I, I would agree, I, I would be inclined to say, why don't we allow it now? And if we start to have uh issues with complaints, then we can revisit and see if we can troubleshoot or if we need to re, you know, revise the ordinance. Um, I was hoping staff could maybe clarify the interplay between like this parklet ordinance um and any noise regulations in this and, and our general noise ordinance in town. Is there any reason why we couldn't or shouldn't just say, let's just have this be regulated by the noise ordinance just like everything else? Does that create like, I don't know, any kind of complication that I'm not thinking of?
No, so our current, I'll just try to clarify our current noise ordinance, um, as I just looked it up, it allows in commercial districts um uh for noise at decibels, forty decibels above ambient. So the ambient is gonna pick up the trucks and all that stuff and so on and so forth, you know, and it allows considerable, considerably more than that for um, if we went that direction, for any other, you know, I, I forget the exact. Um, I think that's for any noise that's sustained over a ten-minute period of time, and that's sort of how we monitor the noise. It's gotta be sustained for a period of time, you're allowed to. You can have your decimal reader out there and our code enforcement can go out there and monitor it. But it's gonna be above the ambient uh level. So um, that's how it would work, you know, if there was actually, uh, if there was an issue, I mean, that would that would be pretty loud, it would have to be very loud in, in order for that to be uh above the noise ordinance. Um, uh, music, um, drums or something like that would have to be gone for- Um, uh music, um drums or something like that would have to be gone for pretty loud and noisy um for a period of ten minutes or more. Um, and that would trigger that and we could issue a violation or something like that.
Is there a time limit on that?
I think it says, um, thank you. So it says uh in commercial districts, forty decibels above ambient noise more than ten minutes in any hour. Fifty decibels um noise occurring more than three minutes in any hour, fifty five decibels noise occurring any amount of time. So if it, if there was, you went out there and it was above fifty five decibels or fifty six decibels above ambient, then you would say that's too loud. So there are those, that's how it's.
Because she had mentioned ten o'clock. Is there actual like a clock time, sorry?
Um, we have nighttime noise regulations um. It's unlawful for any person without justification to make or continue or cause to permit to be made or continue between hours of ten P M and six A M daily, any excessive or offensive noise that disturbs the peace or quiet of any neighborhood so that it's unreasonably disturbing to a person of ordinary sensitivities residing in that area. You know, crystal clear. But uh, but that allows some discretion and obviously I think that's what we would say would be the a- after ten ten P M is when that, any music or excessive noise would would be a violation of the noise.
Okay, so thank you. So I think I think it feels like it would be reasonable then to just say, going forward, at least as a first try, why don't we just say, we'll just have this be governed by the noise ordinance and and allow, you know, amplification within those bounds? And then if it becomes an issue, we can work with, you know, residents and business owners. And even if we're not able to arrive at a resolution, then we can come back and take another look at this ordinance. But I feel like that's a pattern that we've set in a number of these kind of like quality of life um issues where we say we're gonna like, you know, short term rentals, right? We say we're gonna stake out a policy, this seems like a a good way to go, we'll give it a try, if we have problems, we'll come back and revisit. So um, I'm comfortable doing that here with regards to the uh the uh geographic boundaries, i.e. Kidos. Um, I would love to see Kidos included in this. I mean, my feeling is that I think Burma Town might be the first business that I can think of that's actually made it there in that spot. Um, and they moved, uh but you know, but that didn't go under. Um, and and I think it's, I, for whatever reason, it's a very difficult spot, obviously, to to run a business uh or to grow a, to grow a restaurant. So I'd love to do whatever we can to to give uh Kidos a chance to to kinda take root there and become kind of a a a longer term part of the Cordera community. Uh, and then lastly, on the on the timeframe, um, I'm perfectly comfortable going from four to six months. I think that's fine. Um, you know, we're looking at an ordinance that is really supposed to live in perpetuity. And so in in that context, a difference of two months, I think is not, is is not gonna make or break us. Um, so those would be my thoughts. I think we've heard pretty much consensus from the council on on all four of those issues, which were fees, music amplification, geographic boundaries uh and the timeframe um of one that takes effect. Um, but I realized that that, I think that's a little bit much for us to try and like amend on the days, I'm guessing. So would you prefer to just take this as direction, go rework the ordinance and come back at a future meeting, or how would you like to handle this?
We'd like to give it a shot and try to actually get through most of it if we can.
Wonderful.
Seeming, and so we have some uh potential options that we can propose.
You have question? Okay, so it sounds like we've got another question from the council as well.
Uh, Amy, attorney, how low can we go on the fees before before we run afoul of state law? Again, I I ideally it would be half a cent, but again, I want to make sure we don't run afoul of state law.
There, there is no scientific formula that I can give you. The courts look at the individual circumstances and facts before them when rendering a decision. As Mayor Beckman pointed out, there were public improvements made to the streets by tax dollars. Public property is held in trust for the town. We are giving a a substantial benefit to a private business. So the court would consider all, and and I do understand it has built community. I don't know that the court would find that as persuasive as the fact that a particular private establishment is getting a substantial public benefit. So I would encourage counsel to think through this and and not adopt a fee that is a sham. Um, I think it's important that there be a rational basis underlying it. I think uh suggestions about phasing in the fees and and discounting the first year are perfectly reasonable and are likely to be held up by the court. Uh, so I I think that's that's the best guidance that I can give to you. We don't have an explicit valuation for what a parking space is worth in Cordera. Uh, we we don't have parking meters at those particular spaces, so we don't, we don't have the revenue loss. Um, and while the the town gets some value out of sales tax, that tax is distributed to the state, the counties, the town, special districts and so forth. So it it isn't in even match.
So based upon that, are we, can we go as low as twenty five and fifty cents or do you ignore? Go ahead, Adam.
Just for the first year. Yeah, I I I think that it's really important what Amy just said, that because we're asking um, and legitimately asking these businesses to rebuild and redesign and invest in these as permanent structures. It makes all the sense in the world and I feel like the town is totally justified in giving at least serious relief during the first year. And and I I'd love to see it go to zero, but if we have to charge something, then you know, wh- whatever minimum charge we think we should do, but there's total justification to do that when we're asking them to spend thirty, forty thousand dollars to do it right. We want them to do it right and I think they'll have the money to do it right if we waive those fees upfront.
Thanks, Pat. We're gonna go to Rosa.
Okay, um. I don't think it would be fair, you know, we we do charge if someone has a um a couple of tables on a sidewalk, we charge an encroachment fee?
And people don't have tables on sidewalk or shouldn't unless they have a permit, so um, but the permit, encouragement permits are really for construction. So um
Okay.
Table necessarily wouldn't be a.
So we don't, we don't charge if someone puts tables out in front of their restaurant?
We.
We don't.
We, well, on a sidewalk, you know, look, I, so there's, there's some history here because we're talking about the one block. This is generally something that just doesn't happen in Cordera. I mean, we do, there are a couple of examples that um I think actually at Zins and um maybe the Stefano's right on that one corner, which I'm not sure if that's frankly on the public right of way or on private property. But those happened a long time ago, but I don't think should serve as any precedent.
And they don't. Actually, the reason I was asking was not to make a zero, cuz I don't think the number, I don't think the correct number is zero. And there's a lot of numbers between zero and twenty five hundred. And I think a fair number in between there is somewhere, but I I do not hold the belief that there should be practically zero fees because it is such a um, it's an advantage. Um, I think uh someone else had, it's it's an advantage for a business that has the ability to do that. It's a dis- and to give that extra advantage to them for a business who can't do that, who maybe can't afford to do it or just in their location, they can't do it. I kind of see that as not being fair. So I think we need to come up with a reasonable number, a number that, you know, as our wonderful learned attorney said, is not a sham number, but a real number, a number that's worth, by the way, the town actually printing the paper and doing the work and people actually doing it. It's not, you know, it has to be a real number. So I'm not giving you a number right now. But I'm just saying, I I think we have to give a real number.
Enjoy it.
So how many times has that fee and where has it been discussed previously?
Yeah, I think that's part of the challenge we're in is that we haven't essentially adopted or assessed particular um assessments on a square foot basis for public right of way. It's it's relatively new that we've even had this conversation. It did come up to a certain extent in a much different context with Marine Country Day School recently, which the town council did support um a license fee that still has yet to be negotiated, so bear that in mind. Um, uh, but it's typically uh for uh, it's not something that Cordera has has sort of set a standard number for, and so we're we're navigating that a little bit here.
When was that fee proposed and talked about at the planning commission level?
No, it was at the council meeting in Feb- last February, um, when we are talking about actually uh building out a public improvement or essentially with public funds, a right turn only lane into that school.
Oh, no, I I was asking about on, in the consideration of this ordinance, were fees part of the deliberation of the planning when?
No, not not necessarily because this typically that's not a.
No, I, it, okay, so that they didn't have any comment on this, I guess. But so what I'm hearing in in what is important to me in the consideration is once again, this is a very specific about a business, about a culture, but we as a town have those all over the place in different neighborhoods and different uh applications. And, you know, a group of five versus ten thousand making the decision about giving away monies, right? Taxes and stuff like that, like you need a two thirds full vote is kind of on some some considerations like that. You can't just do it, right? And so on that level and understanding that it'll impact other negotiations and and different things that we're gonna do as a town in other locations, right? Setting that and not just making it about trying to, you know, help businesses in a certain area, but understand all the impacts on all the businesses in town is what I just heard. And I think we should all take that seriously and listen to it. And that's where the staff has reviewed that under that consideration and and knows what that price is in all the negotiations, right? So hearing that, I'm okay with accepting it and, you know, saying that it's still low compared to what all the other municipalities. Okay, so what municipality isn't?
Uh, Fairfax does six hundred a parking space, so that would make Zins cost twelve hundred a year. And right now it's four thousand.
Fairfax is.
It's over four thousand.
Fairfax's overall property values and tax rolls and and cost per square foot for commercial and everything else is not the same as Cordera and the and the business expenses and the impacts that and the value of the space than Fairfax. It's not an equal.
But also, but also if I may, Fairfax is already a thriving outdoor restaurant and music scene. And in Cordera, we are scrambling to catch up. And in order to do that, I think we need to say loud and clear to prospective businesses that we want you. And there's no better way to say that we want you than to put our money where our mouth is and say, at least for your first year of operation, if you're gonna build out this beautiful public amenity. And I know that I can go sit at Zins and not have a glass of wine. I've, I I mean, I hate to admit it, Patsy, but I've been there many times. I'm not a big wine drinker and I'll hang out. I don't pay a dime. I listen to the music and nobody hassles me. It's not like you have to sit down and have a table and order something. So I do think it's different than um Marine Country Day, which is having us create a a lane for their parents to pick up driver, to pick up kids. There's no great public amenity to that other than the fact that you don't get stopped in traffic, which I guess is a public amenity. But um, I think we should do a fifty percent reduction in fees across the board to start. Um, except that I think our price per square foot, I'd I'd like to, I'd like to mirror Fairfax. And and if you look at, just Google it, San Francisco waived all of their fees the first year for people to build out these parklets because they wanted them to do a good job and they wanted to encourage them. So I hate to play hardball here, but I just really think I wanna send a message to the business community that we want this square to be cool, like Larkspur, and we're not.
Thanks, Pat. Um, I I I will say I I share your vision for for Old Corinera Square. Um, and I and I think I share uh Patty and Kyle's vision for for Old Corinera Square um and and kind of the direction that we hope it's trending. Um, I I will say I'm I'm comfortable with the the one twenty five square foot fee that staff has come up with. I respect the work that went into that. I would support, however, uh a reduction, uh, you know, and I don't know if it's fifty cents or whatever. I I would support the reduction for the first year just to respect the the upfront capital costs that businesses will go into in in putting in those parklets. But those parklets are also gonna be big revenue drivers for these businesses as we know they have been and as they should be cuz they're fantastic. Um, so I'm, you know, the fees aren't high to begin with. I'm I'm totally comfortable uh reducing them for for the first year. Um, but that that's kind of where my thought is right now. And I think, you know, an analogy, like part of the way I'm thinking about it is I don't see it as that different of like, if you wanted to go and rent out the community center, say you want to put on a private event at the community center and sell tickets, as some folks do, even if your event is open to the public, you gotta pay to rent the community center. Like you can't be, you know, you can't be charging tickets or or, you know, monopolizing a public place like the community center for whatever you wanna do with it, even if it's a good thing, even if it's like, you know, blood donors or something, you gotta, you gotta pay the public for, you know, that that rental of that space essentially. And I think given that the fee, the rental fee that we're talking about here is low and reasonable, I'm comfortable with that.
So based upon that, would you be comfortable on back to think fifty cents the first year? And then forget the the dollar twenty five, but just raising it to a dollar the second year? So we've, we just lowered it down from a buck twenty five to a buck, just to kinda keep it even. They're still getting a discount the first year of the fifty cents.
Yeah, I mean, it's, how does staff feel about that? Does that seem acceptable? Again, this is like, it's not, look, when we're talking about these numbers, it's not making, breaking the town's budget and it's not frankly making or breaking since the budget. Let's just like, if we wanted fifty cents and a dollar, sure.
We have a multi-year, multi-month budget. We're talking fifty cents.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to keep it simple and try to get some kind of consensus.
Yeah, no, I agree. Um, any other thoughts?
The, the, yeah, reducing it in the first, there is capital expenditure and I really like rewarding them uh in that way to to get them started. But then, you know, when it really goes into use, you know, uh, just making sure it's fair. Um, you know, I, once again, the dollar twenty five, I'm fine with. Uh, I don't know why, you know, to me, it's making concession that maybe isn't even, but um, cuz it's, you know, and the, you know, i- i- if you're gonna look at each individual impacted, it's one space, right? Like, we're really, like, the people that aren't represented as Burma Town, they have twice as much space, right? And really, are we only, like, how much money is that really? It's a couple hundred dollars, right? Like, uh, you know, it, but in, so and then we could talk about across the town, right? Like, why'd we, why'd we ask them to do that anyway? Because people didn't like the idea of them getting free parking. So like, what are we really negotiating on the other side of town too, on that fee or with something similar that's fair about what that's valued at, right? Um, so that's why personally still, I I'm fine with that concession, but I'd like to leave it alone because that's what we came with and we're already modifying it so much. I don't know if there's real, you know, it it perceived or any other benefit other than just change, you know, gonna say a change in the rules. But but I, you know, if there's consensus that's three that's just my own personal, so.
All right, um, so I think what what I'd like to do is kind of just a little mini show of hand votes just to make sure that we all have stock of where we're at on these four different issues. So on fees, if we can, if we say that that a proposal from the days is to change our fee structure to one dollar square foot uh with a reduction, further reduction to fifty dollars a square foot for the first year. Thank you, thank you, yeah. Thank you very much.
Patsy just passed out.
Um, so so a dollar square foot uh going forward, reduction to fifty cents a square foot for the first year. Show of hands, how many of us would be comfortable with that? I mean, it, yeah, it's, yeah, it's fine. Um, okay, so so I I think we've got some direction there on amplified music. If we're saying, let's give it a try of just having it be governed by the noise ordinance and allowing amplified music under the noise ordinance, show of hands, are we good with that? Okay, sounds good. Um, talking about the boundaries, if we're talking about extending the boundaries to include Kidos, show of hands, are we good with that? Okay, okay, and then uh.
So one thing on the talk, cuz I'm saying, one thing on the taco place, based upon the design and safety standards, if they don't meet those, it doesn't get built, right? So that's, that's the the catchall type thing.
Right, so they'll have to have a qualified engineer to make sure that they're comfortable with whatever design they come up with. And it may be the, you know, realigning the sidewalk, it may be something different. That'll be for them to determine.
Okay, we're taking into consideration the sightlines from coming out of TJ's and also all those.
As far as their license, they need to look at all that.
Okay.
We will then review their supplemental.
Okay, thanks.
Great, and then the last item that we talked about, the the timeframe expanding from four months to six months, are we all good with that? Okay, sounds good. So I think we've got. Okay, sounds good. So I think we've got direction from council on kind of for uh revision to the ordinance that we would like to see here.
So I think we are looking for the ordinance to be introduced actually tonight at a roll call vote. And I think what the motion might be, if I may be so bold, is to introduce the ordinance with three amendments to the ordinance. An amendment to section twelve point five zero point one two zero, which would extend the um compliance deadline to six months uh from enactment rather than four. Uh, an amendment to section twelve point five zero point zero eight zero C to provide that music is allowed during the hours of operation, subject to the Cordermadera noise ordinance, and we would add in the chapter of that. And then we would amend exhibit A to the ordinance, which uh provides the boundaries of the old town, a Cordermadera Town Square, uh, which would um include Keto's tacos into that. And then um the fees are set in the resolution, which only requires uh one adoption. So we would come back at the next meeting with a change to the fee structure of fifty cent per fifty cents per foot for the first year and after that a dollar uh per foot. So that's, I think, the motion that someone might want to make.
So moved.
Great, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion with the first and second council member Casissa.
Yes.
Council member Lee.
Yes.
Council member Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ravazio.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
Great, well, thank you, everybody.
Sorry, Amy, one quick question. There's a second part to this about resolution uh fifty three two oh twenty three. Do we have to approve that also?
Why don't we just uh continue that item to the next hearing?
Okay, I'll make the motion to go ahead and um move uh resolution fifty three slash two oh twenty three to the next meeting.
Um, well, at the next meeting, I might have a different resolution number, so we'll just continue the resolution in general.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll second that.
To December nineteenth.
Thank you.
And that was um made by council member, because he said, was there a second? I didn't.
Charles.
Catch it, okay. Council member um Casissa.
Yes.
Council member Lee.
Yes.
Council member Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ravazio.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Thank you, that motion carries.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Appreciate you speaking about it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Gonna go far.
I wasn't sure until I saw your face, and then I'm like, oh. Because I couldn't say.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, I've got to do something about it.
We've got uh several agenda items tonight. Um, so we're going to move on to business items, starting with seven A, which is second reading of proposed amendments to the town council. Rules of procedure and possible adoption of a resolution, um, amending those rules, and I will turn it over to staff.
Good evening, being mayor and council members, I um just gonna catch up a moment. Uh, we uh introduced at the last meeting changes to our council rules of procedure to uh uh, update our rules to be consistent with changes in the Brown Act, consistent with our procedures and to clarify and make them a little more efficient and workable. Uh, there is no change from the um last after introduction, so I'll leave it there. Happy to take any questions that council members may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council? Seeing none, we'll open it up for public comment. We have no members of the public present, nor any two members of the public online.
We have five online, no hands raised and no email public comment for this item.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, with that, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council for discussion or possible motion. Who would like to start?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Great, we.
Casissa.
Yes.
Council member Lee.
Yes.
Council member Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ravazio.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move on to business item seven B, consideration and possible authorization to the Public Works Director to execute a contract for preliminary engineering environmental and and public outreach services for Layer Christmas Tree Hill Complete Streets Undergrounding and Evacuation Improvements Project.
Great, thank you, Mayor Beckman. Um. Christmas Tree Hill residents didn't, didn't want to stay for this one. Thank you, load a presentation here. Um, so this is uh an item that has um come after several years of work done by our council, community and staff. Um, as you all know, uh, two thousand eighteen, we got a grant from Caltrans from Senate Bill number one to look at climate adaptation for town and um start planning for that. Um, next slide, please. On May eighteen, two thousand twenty one, that climate adaptation assessment was accepted by town council. And in part of in that, in that document, it included a section on hillsides that identified that there were various vulnerabilities, opportunities and strategies to improve private and public infra- infrastructure focused on evacuation access and overall resiliency, which included a map of priority actions. Um. In addition, um, July of two thousand twenty one, um, to preserve PG&E twenty eight credits and to um reduce concentration of overhead electrical facilities to improve corridor scenic interest and to provide additional safety enhancements by limiting the potential for a downed power line to block critical roadways. Um, council did establish a undergrounding district at the base of Christmas Street Hill. Side please. So the next slide, please. Let's wait. So this um helped create what I've would call a preliminary scoping map that identified a a potential project. Um, this covers, you know, the kind of key roadways there at the bottom of Christmas Street Hole. This is a neighborhood that um, you know, is on the higher fire uh risk side in town. Um, it has um the most limited ingress and egress uh routes for um you know, civilian vehicles, but also for emergency vehicles to access and serve on the public. So we've prioritized this as an area in town to improve for safety enhancements such as electrical undergrounding. Um, improvements to infrastructure to improve these evacuation routes. Um, some of that will be looking at uh geometric design of the roadways, um, taking pinch points and widening them, potentially looking at additional um access points that aren't currently there. And so that went out to a request for proposals to consultants earlier this fall. Next slide, please. And with that, um, we had two qualified teams uh propose and go through an interview process. Um, staff has evaluated them and has selected BKF engineers and would like to enter into a contract to initiate that work. Um, we, next slide, please. We anticipate that um this initial design phase, which is one of two phases, um, will take about two years. Uh, we imagine outreach would start um, spring of two thousand twenty four, if uh council wishes to proceed. And um much of this would go into a lot of analysis and data research, um, land surveying, really, you know, getting the lay of the land in detail of these streets, having a robust public engagement process. Um, establishing goals, seeing what's feasible and really just um improving this important um artery to a uh very important neighborhood in town. Um, the proposed amount is five hundred forty seven thousand nine hundred eighty three dollars. And um happy to answer any questions you may have.
If I, if I may just add real quickly, I I think this is really uh important and exciting um to get this um proposal and and work off the ground. Um, we're doing this to coincide as well with, as many of you are well aware, with some resiliency and adaptation work on the base side, so it's really addressing both hillsides and bayside flooding at the same time, which is exactly what the adaptation assessment was all about. And so you know, as um, from the planning side, I just really um, feel great about sort of taking that initial work that we did and building off of it. And this is what this project does. And as you'll see on the base side as well, we're doing that on the other side as well. So um, I just want to thank RJ for for following through um on this piece of work, which, as we know, is critical um for the future resiliency of um Christmas Street Hill, which as we learned through that adaptation assessment process was, um, you know, is one of our more vulnerable um, the communities in Cordermadera for fire risk. And so I'm looking forward to this work.
Great, thanks so much, RJ and Adam, for that. Uh, we will start with uh questions from council members. Any questions about this project or the contract?
Just a couple quickies. Um, so the cost for the consultants is one thing, but are there other costs that will be incurred during this period? Or does that, is that inclusive of the actual surveying and all?
Yeah, so all of that work is in the total contract. What's not is town staff time.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and then um it it includes evacuation routes. Can you explain what that aspect of the project is about?
Yeah, it's um it's about trying to improve the flow of traffic in emergency. So or I'm sure all of you have driven up there, it's a lot of windy roads, um, a lot of narrow roads. Um, and so strategically, there's areas that are bottlenecks and you can't necessarily get two cars going in or one in each direction, but maybe in stretches you can. So you know, looking at areas to prioritize, you know, hey, if we invest in a retaining wall here, we might have to widen the road and reduce that bottleneck where it's alternating traffic. And that would be just one strategy we're going to look at. Um, we may look at just overall parking and how does that inhibit um, evacuation during an event and and really try to understand that in more detail. Um, understand, hey, you know, in a, you know, legitimate fire vent, you know, how many people are get trying to get off the hill and how fast, how long does it take? And is that reasonable or not? And what can we do to improve it? Um, so it's really that's just, you know, several of the strategies, but there's there's many more and and um you know, we we know we have California Lane, it's not currently an access point, but do we want to look at that as a possible connection either only in evacuation or all the time? Um, unlike many of our other neighborhoods in town that are also in um fire risk zones, those other areas do have multiple ingress egress points. Christmas Tree really only has the main one on the bottom and then one tiny one that you know, sneaks out the back. Um, so for that reason, it's been brought as kind of top priority for um this type of project. And um, we're just really gonna look at it from all different lenses and and try to improve it as much as we can.
So is there any idea of how much the cost of the actual work will be and where those funds might come from?
Um, so as part of the undergrounding district establishing, I I think we threw out some numbers. Um you know, off the top of my head, I think that component, just the undergrounding for that lower portion is somewhere in the neighborhood of one point five. Um, we had one point five million dollars. We have three or four hundred thousand dollars in these twenty eight credits. Um, and then otherwise, we would look, as part of this, we would look at grants. Um, so I, we don't have a definitive number of what the overall project may cost. Um, it's several million dollars, um, but a scope within this um or a component within the scope is to actively pursue grants.
Excellent. Excellent, thank you.
Great.
Eli, I just have one quick question, um, because I know there's green dotted lines on here. There's one where the bike path is. Is that in clear, is it just a dotted line for the bike path? It's not a solid, it's not as dark as the other ones. I just saw that for some reason.
No, I, yeah, it's not, the lines aren't intended to represent. But um, there there's a lot of different things going on. Um, you know, we wanted to be clear that you know, electrical undergrounding is really expensive, and so we are prioritizing prioritizing only at the bottom of the hill so that you never cut off that last artery to get out. Um, there's always a another direction if a um downed power line went down or something like that.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from council members? Yeah.
One really quick question, which may have been answered, but I can't remember right now. So this work has to be done in order to go after the grants, is that correct?
Um, I would say so. It's um, it's currently not gonna compete well in its current state. It's um, it's, it's a big project, and I think we've shown with the track record that as we invest in these initial design efforts, that we can really build the community's consensus, the support, and that really pushes us into the like positive grant category. And so um, I think that's what we're trying to do here.
Okay, thank you.
Charles, any question?
No.
Awesome, okay, thanks. With that, we'll close uh questions from the council and open it up to public comment. Any members of the public that would like to comment on this item? Seeing none, do we have any folks online that want to comment?
Yeah, four attendees, no hands raised and no email public comment on this item.
Sounds good, thank you. So we will close public comment on this item and bring it back to council for discussion. Any thoughts?
Um, I I just have a couple of quick comments. Um, one is, I just want to make sure we set residents' expectations, because I think this is a two-year project, correct? Just to get to a point.
Yeah, so this would um be a couple of years to get through environmental compliance and conceptual designs. And then initial year or two to go through the utility coordination and final design process. So it really in all likelihood, the earliest it would be constructed, if all the funding was there and everything was perfectly aligned, would be maybe twenty twenty seven.
Okay, I I think the project is great and I think it's needed, especially on Christmas tree. I just want to make sure again that we set um residents' expectations, knowing that this is going to be a long haul and it's a long process. Okay, and um, given that, if you can just make sure you come back to us occasionally with updates, so it's not out of sight, out of mind, and you're not expecting every month, just occasionally. And the last part uh piece also is that you may want to reach out to Mark Brown at MWPA. They just created software that they've been working on for over a year. Um, I think that software is over a million dollars. There's too many data points to get into, but there's numerous overlays, looking at evacuation and the street conditions, vegetation. I think this project would play into that software and it may give you um a leg up by trying to utilize it. So if you reach out to him in the same breath, I don't know if there'd be grant money to be had through MWPA um, for the evacuation part of it. So just to get that out there. Thanks. I want, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I just comment, I, it's so nice to have RJ on board because I feel like I can totally trust this process because you've done it so many times before and um, so I'm ready to say yes.
Great, thank you. Any other comments down here?
Thanks again, RJ.
Yeah, I, it's super exciting. I think this is a really important uh project for a number of reasons. Evacuation, fire prevention. Um, we know that undergrounding has been uh a priority for residents, not just in the in the hillside, but across town for years. So it's really exciting that we're able to finally take this first step forward. So thank you. Um, and with that, if there are no other uh comments, we'll go ahead and take a motion on this item.
I'm going to make the motion to authorize um Public Works Director SQ Contract for preliminary engineering, environmental, public outreach services for Layer Christmas Tree Hill Complete Streets Undergrounding Evacuation Improvements Project twenty three oh oh three with BKF Engineering Engineers not to exceed um five forty seven nine hundred eighty three dollars.
A second.
A mouthful.
Okay, council member Casissa.
Yes.
Council member Lee.
Yes.
Council member Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ravazio.
Yes.
Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Thank you, the motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, that concludes our business items. We'll move on uh to reports, starting with the town. Thank you. And that concludes our business items. We'll move on to reports, starting with the town manager.
I have just a couple that I'll try to be quick with. I did want to follow up on our short-term rental ordinance, which were in implementation stage. So I think all of you, many of you may have gotten a postcard already. So that got sent out just informing our residents that of the passage of the ordinance and the effective date. We have application materials up on our website. We've selected an enforcement or a monitoring platform, which is RentalScape. So things are moving apace. And we should be ready to start accepting applications shortly. Also, just wanted to note our, I think one thing has just been incredible to see how many events we've had this year. We had 500, about 500 people attend the Turkey Trot on Thanksgiving morning. So huge turnout there, which gets more and more popular. Leila Mongen, I know, is spearheaded a lot of that and, but our park and rec staff, and we had some public work staff as well out there supporting the event from the town side. So.
Can I just add something to that? Richard Martinez also helped and both of them expressed that they're looking for volunteers for next year because they've been doing it for a couple of years now.
We're gonna have to sort of figure out if we have a registration or something because it's, it's, I, there's almost some concern that it's going to get too big and overwhelm sort of some of our paths and streets. So we'll have to figure that one out. But that's exciting. Then we also had 100 people, I think more or less approximately, I'm told, at our Saturday art opening this last Saturday night at the community center. And so just want to recognize the work of Tim Berry and his staff for all of these different events, which are occurring, not, you know, Thanksgiving morning, Saturdays, Friday evenings. It's, it's a lot of really impressive work to make all these things happen for our community. So I wanted to acknowledge that. And then lastly, acknowledge another, one of our engineering team members work, Dimitri Copeland, who along with Chris Good, I know, but really Dimitri took the, the lead on recuperating or recouping, recouping approximately $50,000 that was spent in during the last year's storms. And so FEMA did reimburse the town approximately $47,000. Just recently got the notice, I think, earlier this, was it yesterday or maybe on Friday? That we got that money and it's not easy to do that. All the back and forth you have to do with FEMA. And so just kudos to to Dimitri for getting town back that, that money that we spent for last year's storms. That I, nothing else.
Great. Thanks so much, Adam. We'll move to council reports. We'll start with Charles.
Yeah. So I, I think I haven't talked about the police and fire. So with police, we bought two new cruisers that had come available that were a good opportunity. We had some public comments. We talked a lot about e-bikes. And then on the topic of the cars, we also talked about electrification of the cruisers and what that would need and how that might function. But, you know, and then the timelines in which they think they might be able to discuss that. And then on the fire council, we basically the sheriff's office wanted to bifurcate and move the fire part of the 911 calls outside of the call center for the, for the sheriff. So they had done a lot of research about joining up with other counties and everything. And then ultimately came to us and we approved it, which is a new Marin dedicated 911 for fire, right? And, and some, there's things in the future that'll be really good, but for right now it's, it's a costly enterprise. It's a needed enterprise. But I think they have strategies to share it. That'll bring it back into a reasonable amount. And so that's, I had to report on that.
Awesome. Thank you, Rosa.
Uh, so I attended the Colorado turf webinar. I don't know if any of you other guys got the invitation. I thought it was really interesting what they've been able to do with natural fertilizers and natural, you know, means and of weed control. And then I also intend, attended the Marin County Development Agency Housing and Federal Grants agency. So we did our priority setting for 2425 and voted in two new committee members. There were nine people who were all fantastic. And it was too bad. We could only take three more. But anyway, that was really great. And then yesterday I attended the Marin Healthy Youth year end wrap up. They have done incredible things legislatively. They've been, you know, in Sacramento a lot and a lot of wins this year for keeping candy colored drugs out of circulation for our kids. So it's all good.
Great. Thank you. Fred?
Yeah, I also attended CMPA council meeting with Charles. I attended age friendly Cordera. One thing there's that they are coming, going to come out in January with a survey. They're working with the consultant to put that together. I attended a Marin Transit Board Meeting yesterday. I also attended an MWPA board meeting, which was I think last week or the week before. A couple of things are we approved a Sarafel San and Selmo Fuel Reduction Project. That it kind of, it's hard to explain where it's at, but it's kind of like the west end of Sarafel into San and Selmo. They're trying to get funding for that. I think there's, it's going to cost about six million total. One thing on these projects, when MWPA does these projects, they get environmentalists, they get EIR, they get geologists. They go the whole yard with as many experts as they can get. So it's not a clear cutting type thing. Also with MWPA did two walkarounds. One was behind Red Hill in Fairfax in San and Selmo. And the other one was behind is, was in Fairfax. They're doing a lot of work with the shaded fuel breaks. It's important to note that because you don't see those from the streets when you're driving. And if you see it before and after, it's pretty amazing what they're doing. Cause the whole thing is, is they cut the fire when it comes down. So it's not, it kind of repeat its process. So I want to get that out there. I attended Twin Cities Disaster Recovery and also intended, which I think all of us did, the volunteer dinner, which thanks to Pat for putting that together. Yeah, it was fun. It was a good turnout too.
And I have just been having fun and not attending any meetings. So I have nothing to report.
Excellent. I, I attended the Central Marin Sanitation Agency Finance Committee meeting on November 7th. I attended a fire council meeting on November 9th. Enjoyed attending the volunteer appreciation dinner on November 10th and then attended the full CMSA board meeting on November 13th. And that is it. And that concludes.
Can I have one more thing? There's the Cordera, the mixer for the Chamber of Commerce on the 7th. Right. At the time that I didn't write it down.
Yeah, I think it's from five until seven and it's at the Cordera Inn, as it always is. And Julie would really appreciate us being there.
Can't wait. Excellent. Thank you.
Is that gonna work for you, Fred?
Five to seven?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a 6:30 meeting with RJ.
All right. So we're going to conclude council reports. Any comments on our draft agenda for the next meeting? And if not, we do have an SD2 meeting, but I want to adjourn the town council meeting in honor of a beloved resident who recently passed away. And that is Joni Vaughn, longtime Parks and Rec Commissioner in, in Cordera, a member of the community foundation, if I'm not mistaken.
A founding member.
A founding member of the community foundation, just all around wonderful kind of gift to Cordera.
And she was everywhere and now her voice is in my mind always saying, why is everything taking so long?
We're going to also, there will be as far as a celebration for her life sometime in January.
Great.
January 12th.
Thank you. So we adjourn the council meeting.
Five minute bio break.
Yes, we're going to take a five minute recess here and then we begin our sanitary district two meeting.
Recording stopped.
Alright, so we're going to call to order the Tuesday, December 5th, meeting of the sanitary district two board of directors. Come over, roll call please.
Board member Casissa? Board member Lee?
Here.
Board member Thomas?
Here.
Vice President Rivasio?
Yes, here.
And President Beckman?
Here. We're going to have open time for public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to any item not on tonight's agenda. We do have any members of the public present who would like to speak on any items? Seeing none, do we have any members of the public on Zoom who would like to speak?
We don't have email and public comment and we do not have any hands raised.
Great. Thank you. Then I will close open time. We do not have any presentations. We have one consent calendar item. This is an item that is routine and has previously been discussed and does not require further discussion. Would any members of the board, staff or public like to pull our consent calendar item? Seeing none, do you have any hands on Zoom?
We do not have any hands on.
Okay. Can we get a motion on the consent calendar?
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar. Do I have to say of the, that's all?
That's, that's fine. Do you have a second? Great.
Board member Casissa?
Yes.
Board member Lee?
Yes.
Board member Thomas?
Yes.
Vice President Rivasio?
Yes.
President Beckman?
Yes, thank you. Great. We have no public hearings. Moving on to our business item for tonight, 6A, that is presentation and acceptance of the sanitary district number two annual independent audit report for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023. And I will turn it over to Daria.
Thank you and good evening. And this item is the annual independent audit for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023, as well as the presentation of the financial statements. The district's auditor, Andrew Roth, who is a CPA and partner with the Poon Group, is on Zoom and he's going to present the financial statements and the audit. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, board and board chair. We're gonna, I'm going to share my screen now. Second. We're gonna have a presentation today to go over the financial statements for the sanitary district number two of Marin County. And you guys see the presentation? Okay. So we'll get started.
We cannot see the presentation yet.
Oh, you guys can't? Okay. No, okay. Very cool. There we go. All right. So here we're, we're here to present the financial, the audit of the sanitary district for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2023. So some items we're going to go over, let's scope of work, the audit responsibilities, it's going to be management as well as the auditors. The approach to the audit, some accounting changes, overview of the financial statements, and then also go over the audit results. Our scope of work this year, our scope of work was perform an audit of the annual financial report of the sanitary district. And that's going to be a, that's going to include your statement of net position, your statement of revenues, expenses and changes in that position, statement of cash flows, and then also the notes, the basic financial statements. For the audit responsibilities for management, management's responsible for the financial statements. They're responsible to present the financial statements in accordance with accounting principle, accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America and also known as US GAAP. To responsible to adopt sound accounting policies to establish and maintain internal controls or financial reporting and compliance. Management's responsible to provide evidence supporting the amounts and disclosures in financial statements. And that those, and for the fair presentation of financial statements that are free from material statements, whether due to fraud or error. Management's also responsible to detect, prevent and detect fraud. So audit, auditors responsibilities are going to be, us as auditors, we're, we're responsible to perform the audit in conformity with the auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America. And the standards applicable to financial audits contained in the government auditing standards issued by the Controller General of the United States to communicate with those charged with governance. The auditors are also responsible to assess the audit risk of internal control or financial reporting to determine, determine the fairness of the presentation of the financial statements. And finally to render opinion on the financial statements. And also if there are any recommendations to management to typically it would be issue a letter, but as of right now this year, we didn't have any, any findings or anything to note that wouldn't require to issue a letter. So our approach thought it. So typically the Poon Group audit approach for the sanitary district, it's always going to be a four, four-phase approach. Detailed planning, since it is a ongoing client, we kind of like coming at an update, see a change in personnel, change in any kind of in the, in, in the entity or in the environment around it, determining areas where there could be risks. And then we'll take those, that information to, to perform a risk-based review and internal controls over the systems and compliance over those controls. And then those couldn't, those areas would be finding for reporting. That's going to be your bank reconciliation, journal entry process. Revenues, that's going to be billings, revenue recognition and cash receipts. Then your expenses, which can be procurement, procurement, accounts payable and cash disbursements. Also the payroll and related liabilities, which also includes human resources processes people go through. And then another piece is going to be the general IT controls of, of the town. Or of the district. Sorry. So phase three is the validation of, of account balances. So phase three is going to be known as kind of the year end audit phase. It's kind of when we come, come out after year end. And we perform, we can, we confirm balances with banks or, or, or on loans. But then we also do substantive tests and also, and other procedures to, to validate those account balances. And then after that, our fourth phase is going to be the preparation, financial statements, issuance of audit opinions and presentation to board or council. So accounting changes, I'll go through them quickly because the, none of them actually added like an effect. So on the, on the sanitary district, so the board that were applicable this year that were new were the Conu Dead Obligations 91. The Public Private and Public Public Partnerships and Availability Payment Agreement Arrangements, that's 94. 96 is going to be the subscription-based information technology arrangements. There's going to be Sabitas. That's like the main one that came out this year that you'll see. And then also 99 is just an omnibus overall for minor changes to the qualification. So an overview of the financial statements, I'm going to do just a general overview. If there's any like specific questions on the changes, I'd probably direct those to Daria. But I will go through the, just a general kind of overview. But if you have questions for me, feel free to let me know. So this is a summary, summary statement in that position for June 30th, 2023 and June 30th, 2022. But just in general, there was a general decrease in the current assets, about 7.5%. That is because the spending funds on capital projects and also timing on accounts receivable. And then non, the non-current assets increased because there was an increase in, in capital projects for the year. So the total assets increased 1.6 million. So it's about 4%. Total liabilities increased 224,000, but it is 39%, but significantly if you look at the percentage of assets, that's not actually a very large amount. But the bigger piece you want to look at is going to be the net position. It's going to be your net investment in capital assets. And as you see, so that's going to, that'll be your invest, that will be, and your capital assets, not even any related debt. And as of right now, I don't think that, then here district has any debt on their capital assets. So, so it's just going to be the capital assets. So it increased the same amount as the capital assets. That's why you see that the same. And then, so the emergency reserve that is unchanged. And but then if you look at the unrestricted net position, that decreased about a million dollars, but most of that's because you guys were investing money into capital assets. That's why net investment in capital assets on that. So total net position increased 4% this year, about 1.4 billion. So this is going to be a kind of a summary of the statement of revenues and statement of revenues, expenses and changes, change in that position for 2020 and 2023. So operating revenue, I know last year we had a, I, it didn't match as much because I think we moved by basis of their understanding as if I want to say like a property taxes going towards kind of the operations or but it, it, there was no real changes in operating revenue. It stayed pretty steady. But there was an increase in the operating expenses about 24%. I think some of that was from the cost of employees at the city, at the town, working for the sanitary district. And there was other items noted. If you look in the MDNA, there's a pretty good explanation about that. So the operating loss, which I would say overall, don't, I'd say mainly look at the change in that position. Cause when you had like the property tax and the different features that are kind of like, you're getting them most every year. And it's not like one-time grant funding typically, I would more think of that in like the general operations, even though it's, even though it's called non-operating. So operating loss is 2.9 million loss, but if you put everything together, that the non-operating revenue expense increased just a little bit, about $300,000 to give you a change in net position that at 1.4 million that we discussed. For our audit results, the audit results for the audit was an unmodified opinion. This is a clean opinion. This is what you're looking for. This is part of an audit. The audit was an unmodified opinion. This is a clean opinion. This is what you're looking for. This is part of an audit. Which it states that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material specs. Significant accounting policies have been consistently applied. Estimates are reasonable. Disclosures are properly reflected in the financial statements. And some other results we noted during the audit was there we had no disagreements with management. There were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal controls noted. And there were no accounting issues. Not during audit. And that is our presentation. Any questions?
Great, thank you very much. Do we have any questions from board members?
I just have one, but it's more Daria question. Finally, this right operating expenses increased like a million one. If I take out depreciation, it looks like the bulk of this is in collection, maintenance in admin in general. Can you maybe just speak to why that is? Because it's it's it sticks out.
Yes, yes. Okay, so the, as you noted, about one point one million dollars increase of operating expenses. So about four hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars was for depreciation. There was an increase of about two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars, and that was for town employees doing sanitary district work. The sanitary district pays the town based on the amount of work that the the employees do. So that was two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. And the grants to property owners for the sewer lateral work that they're doing on their property. That increased by about a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. So that was a hundred and fifty-four thousand. And then. The treatment and disposal expense that is paid to CMSA increased by about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So those are the increases.
Yeah, if I can add some comments, so. You know, we were it still are finishing up our master plan, but as part of that process, we did have to do a lot of C C T V. That plan also identified a lot of lines that needed additional maintenance. We've also invested with some. More emphasis of staff on that side, on the maintenance side. So all of those things have kind of increased the operating expense. I actually think that those levels are closer to what I would expect moving going forward. We're really just trying to be a lot more proactive on our maintenance. Especially since we have more skilled staff members, so.
And then when you do that, you're using town employees. For the sanitary district and basically you're just allocating the town's basically reimbursing. Yeah.
It's well, it's a combination. So some of our maintenance is actual town staff and other is contracted maintenance work.
Okay.
So you'll see it from both sides. But yeah, we we just go through the accounting of. Basically, individual employees, how they're used by percentage town versus S D two, and that's how we bill against.
Okay, so theoretically, would that reduce some of the town salary expense if it's being allocated? To the sanitary district?
Yeah, it gets reimbursed.
Yeah, in a in a net zero staff perspective, yeah, but I think. We did bring Wes Sitler on. He's been primarily S C two since he got here, I want to say a year and a half ago. He's our superintendent. And then we, again, invested more resources on that side. So addition of staff and also shifting of staff responsibilities.
Okay, this is going to kind of be the thing going forward. Just because, okay, all right, thanks.
So I'd like to follow up on that then, because I mean, we're reviewing this, but also given the kind of net decreases that we're seeing, right? Like, what's the timeline in which you think the master plan and our ability to basically stopgap what could be a future, you know, kind of. Stop a stopping point where we really have to address what our current maintenance needs are, right?
Do you mind?
So 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 right now, right, there was a like the overall decrease in total monies that we have in the Santa it decreased our total position, right? We're not in debt, but we're we're slowly chipping away at what was a surplus, right, is from how I read it.
Yes, that's right. Although the net position increased, it was due to investment in capital assets, actual cash.
Yeah.
Decreased by nearly a million dollars.
Yes. So so basically, we have one billion dollars now and we're like, so is it? Something where we're going to have to address it in this next year to basically, you know, make sure and and is that? You know, do you have that process understood and you're confident in how to address that?
Yeah, so I mean. We were here about the two ago doing the draft capital improvement program. And that's next step there is to go into the rate study. So that is happening early twenty twenty-four to have some workshops, discuss our options. And then eventually bring that back to the sanitary district board for possible consideration of adjustment of rates. But I think in reality. We're at that point now, we really need to give adjustment of rates a hard look in order to fund the necessary capital improvements to make our infrastructure reliable or responsible and all those things. Expanded maintenance helps. We've seen a reduction in our overflows since we've put that at an emphasis. The master plan helped because I identified pipes and other deficiencies that we otherwise wouldn't have known about and that probably would have had overflows. So they're all helping, but yeah, we will need to give a hard look at consider increasing rates.
Very soon.
Here, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Just one more. Are there any grants available for this kind of structural work?
There are grants, not nearly as many on a, say, a, you know, town agency, but we're keeping an eye out. There might be some down the road for. We might identify a need for a larger wet well that could reduce a hazard, you know, or a, you know, down the road, we might. Spend the time and effort and see if we can replace some of our backup generators with sustainable generators, those sort of things. But it's not, the money's not as available as it is for government agencies.
Great, thank you. So we will open this item up to public comment now. Do we have any members of the public here who would like to comment on this item? And seeing none, do we have any hands up on Zoom?
We don't have email public comment and we have one attendee, no hands raised.
Great. Then I will close public comment and bring this item back to council, to the board for discussion and a possible motion.
I'll make a motion to accept for acceptance of sanitary district two annual independent audit report for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
A second.
Board member Casissa.
Yes.
Board member Lee.
Yes.
Board member Thomas.
Yes.
Vice President Rovazio.
Yes.
President Beckman.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Great, thank you. Move on to district manager and board member reports. Do we have a district manager report?
I want to give a quick update about just some construction going on on Tale Pious. It's one of our, you know, main roads in town. And so that work is well underway. They're doing the main trenching. They're trying to get to Chapman. But then once they get there, they'll have to come back and do the laterals. So overall, construction is scheduled to go through January. And just wanted to give an update on where we're at, but it's an important project. It's really going to. Address some profile deficiencies and also some structural pipe issues and improve capacity long terms.
Great, thank you. Do we have any board member reports? Surprise, surprise. Okay, any comments on our draft agenda for the next meeting? And if not, we're adjourned.